Thank you. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the regular city council September 21st, hybrid from the John Zahn Community Center at 6:32 PM. This meeting is being recorded by the city council and GCTV. If any other persons present are doing the same, please notify the chair at this time. Seeing none. In accordance with MGL's Chapter 30A, Sections 20G, no person shall address a meeting of the public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall at the request of the chair be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. Clerk roll call, please.
Can you use your microphone, please?
I'm here.
Thank you. Vice President Gwynn?
Here.
Councilor Disorder is absent this evening. Councilor Bottomley?
Here.
Councilor Bullock? President Gilmore?
I'm here.
Councilor Lapinski?
Here.
Councilor Mayo?
Here.
Councilor Healy?
Here.
Councilor Elmer? Councilor Forgji?
Here.
Councilor Ricketts?
Present.
Councilor Toranzo?
I am here.
Vice President Gwynn, you have a quorum.
Very good. We'll now do the pledge of allegiance. It is voluntary. We have no minutes to approve, so the first thing would be communications from the superintendent of schools or the school committee? Or both?
There's no minutes to approve?
No, I don't have the time to review the direction.
Hi, everybody. I know that Christine has prepared a few things, so I'll just riff off of her. Go ahead.
Apparently, I've prepared a few things. I wanted to thank you for having us. Wanted to share that the school year started in a much less eventful way than it did last year, which we're all very pleased about. The administrators have been sharing the positive work happening in classrooms using the social-emotional learning curriculum and students getting to know each other and working together to set classroom expectations, which has been very positive. And the assistant superintendent and I were lucky enough to participate at a pep rally at Federal Street School where they celebrated all the students who had been able to get green wave for following the FSS Way, which is friendly, safe, and... and I forgot, which is terrible. But their positive behavioral expectations, and I'll email you all when I can remember that later. So it was wonderful to see all the students who were recognized for being able to get green waves in the first three weeks of school. We also have started the work of our community meetings to review the NESDEC study options that you folks... you were all able to see the NESDEC study. So tonight was the first meeting that we have scheduled. We have, I believe, five more around the community, and those dates will be posted on the website so everyone in the community can see them. They were sent out to families in my parent update, but we'll publish them readily on the website for everyone. We had a small group tonight, but they were wonderful in sharing their thoughts about which options would work best in their opinion, and we look forward to hearing much more about that. And the other big event occurring with the school committee is that we have started the strategic planning process. And right now, we are going to be sending out communication tomorrow to engage families. Any family member who's interested in serving on the strategic planning committee will have the opportunity to submit their information. We are coordinating folks from the administrative team, from our collective bargaining units, and we'll begin that. Data is being gathered already so that we can make a good, solid plan going forward for the schools, and I believe that's something you folks may be talking about tonight as well, so we hope we can have a representative from the council. So those are the big things. The re-envisioning our school facilities and the strategic planning are huge endeavors, and we're very excited about those.
And I think since we last spoke to you all, we also had the tour of the schools before we opened, and there were a couple of counselors. Councilor Elmer, who maybe is online, and who did you say the other one was that was...
Councilor Disorder.
Oh, yeah. So we had two counselors that went along to see the schools before they opened, and we'll plan to do that also every year, so there's a chance for folks to see what's happening actually in the facilities. And we'd happily take any questions.
Councilor Healy?
I have a couple of questions. The hot ticket, the yonder pouches. So have you received any feedback from the principals or parents about the Yonder program? And, you know, I'm sure it's been positive and negative. Everybody has their opinion, but just wondering how the implementation's going.
So we did. We understand our student representative at school committee shared that students would prefer to not have them, which I completely understand. I think that's not an unexpected response from students. The principals have shared very positive feedback. What they're seeing are students that are in classrooms, not in the hallways. We've actually had an extremely high compliance rate at both high school and middle school, meaning students are coming in with their pouches in working order every day and putting them... putting their phones in them. Very few issues. We have had feedback from some families about things, logistics that we need to address, like coordinating when sports practices get canceled or changed and needing to address those. So we're trying to work on logistic... you know, logistics that can support the communication we need with families. Derek Morrison at the high school has shared an email address with families that can be used in case there's some urgent communication that needs to be gotten to a student. So that was something that was in place in another district where he and I visited to see the program, and they had felt it was positive, so we're trying that. And, you know, in general, we're on the educational side. We are seeing positive results, but I did share with school committee last Wednesday some measures that we'll use as one part of determining, you know, whether this has been a successful trial or not. And it's really looking in two places, to look at the academic engagement of our students, and then I do believe that we'll see an improvement in disciplinary write-ups, especially at the high school for skipping class and tardy to class. We believe that will also improve.
One more? Sure. It's not really a question, it's kind of a compliment. So I took the tour of the high school for open house, and you opened up the woodshop program at the high school, which is awesome. Kyle Bostrom is the teacher. He's a great guy, so I'm really excited to see that back in the high school, so thank you.
Sure. And I'm pleased to share that Kyle forwarded a request to the Greenfield Education Foundation that I supported, and I'm just waiting for a final response on that, but they were positive when it was shared with them, so.
Was there someone else that had a question? Councilor Ricketts and then Councilor Lapinski.
So I just want to commend you for meeting the students and parents where they live. So I like that you're having all these things, like enlightened woods, oak courts, so it makes it easier for everyone, and whether it's on Zoom or in person, you know, you've taken that big step, so thank you so much.
Councilor Lapinski?
I'm just curious why you wouldn't just simply prohibit the phones from being in school? Why go through the trouble of buying stuff to do that?
So that rule is in place already, and what we discovered is that the amount of time that staff was having to redirect students and the numbers of students that needed to be redirected around telephone use in classrooms was really interfering with the ability to instruct and for students to learn. And we recognize that students need to have access to phones before and after school on their way to and from, especially if they're walking, so saying to families, "Don't have phones for your children," was not realistic. So there are other lower-tech ways that can be done, you know, some places and some families suggested that we put the shoe racks on doors, but if phones aren't powered down, then they're on the door buzzing and beeping and ringing, which is not exactly, you know, distraction-free. So we're... we are going in this direction right now, and we will look at the data and get feedback from our teachers, and we're happy to have feedback from families, especially around logistical issues. We'd very much like to address those as best we can, and then we'll reevaluate and see where we stand at the end of the school year.
Excellent. Was there anyone else with any questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time with us.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a question. Is that Councilor Mayo? I'm sorry.
Yes, it is. Do you propose... when do you plan on reevaluating whether or not the system works? Is that going to be six months?
Are you talking about the pouches for the cell phones? What are you talking about?
That's correct.
So we will be looking at data points throughout the year, but really, the cumulative assessment will be toward the end of the year because the data points that I identified were year-long discipline statistics. So we'll continue to have conversations about them as we go through the year, but that would really be... it's a summative data point.
Okay. Thank you.
It looks like we have another question from Councilor Elmer.
Yes, this is now a question about schools. I'm in hybrid, and I'm not seeing the John Zahn Community Center camera. Usually, we can see the counselors at the table. Just wanted to let you know. Thanks.
Thank you. We can check on that. We'll see what's going on. Now, communications from the mayor or city officers and employees, so Chief of Staff Laterno is our acting mayor this week, so...
I'm testing. Hello? Yes, the mayor is away at a family wedding out of state, so I am here in her place. Thank you all. Thank you, counselors. Thank you to the superintendent and the school committee chair for that lovely update. I have heard from my nephew at Greenfield Middle School that this year has been going good, so that is great news. Middle school is tough. I have a lot of good news and good work I wanted to highlight as part of this. I feel like we don't focus on that as much as we ought to. And I also want to introduce our Director of Communications, Erin Kupac, who you all may have met and/or communicated with. He's actually here in person for the first time tonight. So lots of good news in the city. It kind of shows the breadth and depth of the work that we do every day. And I want to thank treasurer-collector Kelly Varner on her presentation last night to Ways and Means. She was meeting with them along with some of the advocates for home equity reform and was outlining the process for tax title in Greenfield. It seems to me that the city of Greenfield is doing a pretty good job. We obviously have some room for improvement, but I think that I was pleased to hear the fairness in the home equity issue here, and I think we could be used as a model in Massachusetts, frankly. You're going to be seeing a press release later this week, probably tomorrow, about Greenfield being once again designated a green community. So that's our environmental designation, and we think our Carol Collins, our energy director, has done a lot of work with that. You guys may know there's fun stuff going on this weekend, Vintage Days. I bring that up because it is a joint event between the city and the Greenfield Business Association. It's this weekend. There's going to be a vintage car show, a tractor parade. Various businesses downtown and around the city, not just downtown, are having specials in sidewalks and window sales, and there's going to be a big cookout, a fundraiser for the fire station's museum section. So if you are hungry and you want to enjoy that, please do. Stop by the Goods pop-up shop. I've heard some chatter about this. This is also a joint venture with the city. I can't remember the exact name of the grant, but it is partially funded by a grant, and it's a partnership with GCC. And what it does is it features a rotation of microenterprises. So these are people who are usually a business of one, making and creating products to sell to our lovely city shoppers. And that grant is particularly to foster small businesses. You may have seen the updated Visit Greenfield MA website. That has been launched. It's looking pretty good. That is another website that is to help both residents and visitors know what is going on around town, where they can eat, where they can see, what they can do. Speaking of websites, I know people will probably be asking, they want to know how the municipal side is going, and it is going. We did pass the best-case scenario date for launch, but that's fine. It's technology, and I have to say Caitlin Von Schmidt is plugging away, editing, reconfiguring, and we're checking everything with the special ADA tools they have as part of this new website. So it's still on track to be launched this fall, keeping in mind that fall starts tomorrow. So it'll still be soon. You guys may have noticed, this is just cute, and I just wanted to mention it, is that one or more of our fire apparatuses may be featured in the upcoming 2023 calendar by Allegiance Fire and Rescue. There was a photo shoot in front of City Hall. And then another piece of good news involving the fire department, and it's among the financial orders that you'll see, is that you have a resolution in front of you to accept the United States Department of Agricultural Grant in the amount of nearly $1 million towards the fire station project. There's other business on there, mayoral appointments, including a new health department medical director, which I think a lot of people forget is required by law for us to have an MD in this role. So the health department has been working on lining that up, and they got us a doctor to help, as well as another board of health member. The health department's also working with the new Baystate residency program. I just learned about this today. So as you may know, there's a handful of new residents that are working with Baystate to finish their role towards becoming a physician, and one of the things they want to learn more about is public health, so they are actually teaming up with the health department to learn about that. Among the non-financial orders, there are two. They seem boring, but they're very important. Water use and sewer use, Chapter 355 and 415. This is part of a package that was first submitted in 2020, and these do two changes, represent things that are based on regulations that were put for us by Mass. Department of Environmental Protection. So this is kind of urgent now, and I'm glad that it's in front of you. This was part of the 2020 code review process. You guys know 2020 was chaotic and crazy, but I think it does highlight, we did a lot of code review that year in the city, that although that we did have to close the doors to the public for a while, city employees were working, and we were working on things like that. Strike-through documents are kind of fun for me, but maybe not for everybody that had helped me. It was one of my favorite committees when I was on the council, was A&amp;O. So we still have work to do. You'll be seeing more of those coming in the coming months. Liz Gilman will speak more on this as the finance director presently, but we have the updated funding stack in front of you for the fire station, including the USDA grant that I mentioned. Both Liz and the members of Ways and Means can probably speak better in the details because I know they've talked about it, asked a lot of questions. I will add something that just is of note. In conversations when we're out and about with leaders from other cities and legislature members and other folks, more than one person independently has said to the mayor, and I've overheard this, that it's an amazing accomplishment, the amount of work that we've been able to get or start in 2022, especially considering that we are not currently doing a debt exclusion or an override. So I just want to highlight that, and as a resident of Greenfield, I'm really happy to see all the work that is going on, even when it's hard, and I thank you guys for that. Speaking of amazing accomplishments and other things that are dug up and being built, Sanderson Street, West Street, Wisdom Way, you guys know, drive around town lately. It is very hard to get from point A to point B, but Sanderson Street is on time. The Phase 1, right, Marla? Phase 1? Paving is going to happen on October 1st, and so that'll be paved. I know Sanderson Street is the new road to Turners right now. It's really hard to get up and down. West Street sewer replacement is complete. The project will be completed this year, probably mid-November. Wisdom Way is on schedule. If you haven't driven by and seen the new wall, it's actually pretty impressive. I don't know much about construction of the wall, but I can tell it looks pretty strong. The dredging of the lighting glen is complete, and the expectation is to begin filling that, close the valve, and fill that back up. So, you know, we've had water issues this summer, but remember, we are still in a drought, so the drought designation hasn't changed, and even if we were relying just on that glen, it will take a while to fill up. However, there is a drought task force, which is the group from the state that designates the drought. They'll be meeting tomorrow, so maybe, maybe we'll have updates. In front of you, speaking of DPW, we have the transfer station doors. Director Marla Warner is here. If you have questions about this, he also attended Ways and Means to answer about this. This is another item that is not really a want, it is a need at this point because the doors are not operational. And then finally, I just want to mention, there's another financial order in front of you that was taken to the table by Ways and Means, and that's the financial order for the proposed audit of the Greenfield Police Department. I was thinking a lot about whether to speak to this or not, so I just wanted to mention that according to a publication I read called Fighting Police Abuse: A Community Action Manual Put Out by the ACLU, one of the first steps for a community who finds themselves in a situation such as ours, embroiled in a legal case involving racial animus, involving the police, is to gather the facts. So I work for city government, and I work with police, but I also consider myself, at least I have considered myself, to be a social justice-oriented person. But I live, you know, I know that as a white person, living in a majority-white town with a population of 17,000, I don't believe that I personally have the expertise to determine with certainty whether or not policies, procedures, the way that systems work is biased against people, especially people of color. There are experts who do know this, and there are experts who do this, and there are experts who look through this, and we can hire them to look into what is going on here. And we can tell... they can tell the public. They can tell us. Us is us. Us is everybody. What is going on, what we can change, and how we can better our community, and that's what this audit is, and we cannot audit ourselves. That's it. Unless you have questions.
Thank you. We have questions. Councilor Forgji?
Some very good news.
Some very good news. I'd like, if you could, speak about our free cash certification and the figure.
Is Liz on the line? Liz, do you want to talk about free cash? I'm going to leave all money questions to you.
Sure. I believe you all should have received an email with the certified number, but if you have not, I will read it to you. It's 4,002-821, and I had sent to council final revenue and expenditure reports that kind of summarized where this came from, how it was generated. And it's actually a pretty good thing considering, number one, the situation with the fire station, all the capital needs, a need to reduce the tax rate, need for contract stabilization, need for compensated absence bond, replacing what we're taking out of general stabilization. And so as someone who is on numerous phone calls with standards and pores and moody's, I can tell you they don't want to see our stabilization balances drop. We were in line to get an upgrade on our bond rating, and part of that is hinging on our stabilization balances. And that's important because your bond rating affects the interest rate you receive. So in the grand scheme of things, this is important. It's important to the city's financial stability, and I will emphasize that we also are doing a significant reduce the tax rate that we feel is the right thing to do. And I just will entertain any questions on the free cash, if any counselors have it.
Let me... is there anyone that has questions on the free cash? Councilor Ricketts?
Okay, I just want to thank you very much. You are kind of like straightforward and professional. I don't know how you're not screaming. This is such great news. This is a big deal. When was like the last time this happened, like this amount of money?
I would say during... it was before me, 2014, '15, probably soon after Kelly Varner had started because treasurer-collector Kelly Varner had to clean up a lot of backlog, so there was a significant increase after that occurred. So, yeah, it is good and needed, as I'll be happy to speak about on future financial orders coming.
Thank you so much. You could mute yourself for a second and scream because I'm so happy. This is such big news. I don't know if everybody in the room totally understands it, but this is huge, and it's huge for Greenfield, so thank you.
Is there anyone with any questions on the free cash? All right. Thank you, Liz. We appreciate your expertise and professionalism always. Oh, Councilor Mayo has his hand up. I'm not sure if it's about free cash.
It is.
Okay.
Well, I have my question up for Danny, but I also have a question for Liz.
Sure. Why don't you go with the question for Liz at this point, and then we'll go back to Director Laterno.
Liz, great news on the $4 million. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
I can.
That's great. I think that's wonderful news. I think it's great for the taxpayers, for Greenfield. But as a city council, we've been presented a number of times about raising money, and we even talked about it tonight, about raising money for the fire station. Is there any reason why we can't use even a portion of that money towards... instead of asking the taxpayers to volunteer their money to use money that we already have towards the fire station?
So in essence, we are doing that, Councilor Elmer... or Mayo, sorry. And because of timing, and we all know timing is everything, the deadline for submitting financial orders and the deadline for the city to respond to the fire station bids is September 24th. So at the time, I did not have certified free cash. If I did, $1 million would be coming from there. So as it is now, we're going to replace... So as it is now, we're going to replace the 1 million. So really, in theory, 1 million is coming from free cash. The other thing I will say is the borrowing authorization is actually written, as all the other fire station borrowing authorizations, to have the bond premium, which I can certainly answer questions if people don't understand bond premium, will, will be paid off by the premium. So we really aren't asking for more taxation, per se, on the additional funding for the fire station.
Right. But you are asking for volunteers to donate. You know, it's not, it's not taxation that you're talking about. You're asking for donations to, from the taxpayers to be given, not through their taxes, but through some of the activities, activities, activities that were mentioned by Danny, that part of those activities was going to be raising money for the fire station.
The Greenfield Business Association is running that fundraiser, Councilor Mayo. They decided where the money was going. It wasn't the city asking.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions for, for Director Gilman? Anyone? Councilor Mayo, I'll come back to you on your question for Chief of Staff Letourneau, but I'm going to recognize Counselor Lapinski, who had a question initially.
Sure. So my question is not about finance, but it is about Liz Gilman. We all love Director Gilman, but I'm wondering what the plan is for having a finance director that lives in Massachusetts.
So we-
Me too.
Yeah. Liz has that same question. So we have been, we, the position is open. We have been interviewing people. We have been having conversations with people. This is a high-level position. It's not an easy decision on either side. And we've had some good candidates, and we have more good candidates coming. So that's really as much as I can say. I've met a few of them, and I know there's at least one more coming in a couple of week, or next week, I believe, for interviews.
Next week.
Yeah, next week, that they're meeting with. So, you know, this is, this is the kind of job that people tend to move from one part of the state to another, and those are big decisions for people to make. And as you all know, from, if you imbibe any news whatsoever, the job market is tight for job, for hiring people, but, yes.
Is there anything that we can do to make the job more appealing to these people, since there's not so many of them?
That is an excellent question.
Is it going to take more money, more, like, what do we have to, because obviously, there's an endpoint where we have to have this.
Yeah, there is.
So we can't just keep waiting.
So we're having these exact conversations, so thanks. And, and we have been having these same exact conversations internally about how to make it a more enticing offer in all the ways. And we, it depends on the candidate. So we do now have a, kind of a menu selection of different things that we're offering when the next candidate comes along, based on feedback from other candidates. It doesn't seem to be the money, honestly. At least that's what even folks who have declined the position have said, it's not the money. And it, it's just, you know, it's, it's, people are making choices about their life that's better for them. I think that's something that's happened after the, you know, post-pandemic world is people want let work-life balance and want to make sure that if they're going to uproot their family and move them to Greenfield, they know what's happening. So if you know anybody with a municipal finance background, you can help by telling them to come talk to us and apply, honestly. I mean, these are two-way conversations when you're going in for a director job. You're not just there trying to sell yourself to the people, you're trying to decide if you want the job too. So tell people to apply, share it with your professional networks, get us more candidates. That's the best thing that we can do right now. And if I think of anything other creative, obviously, I've been, you know, I would be open to hearing from people what they have for ideas, but-
Sure.
We'll, we'll try things. I've been hiring people for a long time, and this is a-
Got it.
-real weird time, you know?
And on the subject of the police chief, I know it's been widely reported that both he and another police officer have a delay in their recertification. With the peace officer standards and training, there's a, I'm the only one that's heard this?
I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't know enough about that process to answer that question. You'd have to wait for the mayor.
Sure.
I honestly don't.
Do you know enough about it to know whether, should, should the state agency refuse to recertify if these officers can continue as officers on the force?
I'm not going to answer that question. I don't know exactly what their criteria is for choosing to or not. So, no, I'm not going to answer that. You're asking me to speculate on whether the post should approve?
No. I'm, I'm saying, if they approve, obviously, they continue as officers.
Right.
If they don't, is it legal for them to continue as officers? I'm just asking a legal question.
I don't know the answer to that either.
Okay. No further questions?
Thank you. Counselor Elmer, do you have a question? One has your hand up and one doesn't, so I'm not sure.
I don't have my hand up.
Yeah, it is on the screen. It's on the TV, but it's not on the computer, so I just didn't want to miss you. So, all right.
I'm still, I'm still not seeing the John Zahn Community Center camera.
Yeah, I put makeup on it, everything.
So Counselor Elmer will try to figure that out. I think Fernando might still be here. Counselor Mayo, did you have another question? Because your hand was up, but now it's gone.
No, no, it's not gone. It's still up.
All right. Counselor Mayo, if you have a question, this is a good moment, and then I'll recognize Counselor Bullock.
Okay, thank you. This question is for, for Danny, and she mentioned it just a moment ago, that she was unfamiliar with, with the Post Commission's report on, on whether or not Mr. Hague can continue in, as a police officer in the city of Greenfield. Their commission statement is basically saying that if, if they had, please, all police officers have to be recommissioned by, via the Post Commission. And the letters A through H had from July to September, to September 1st, in order to get recertified. And if they weren't recertified, they cannot be an officer or a chief in the, in any city or town of Greenfield until they are recertified. So I'm wondering why we have Chief, Mr. Hague back in Greenfield as a police officer? And I call him, I call him Mr. Hague because the Post Commission has yet to make a determination. As a matter of fact, they said that there's a problem with, with that, with reviewing, reviewing that particular file. So in, in knowing that, why, why do we have Mr. Hague back in, in uniform?
Thanks for your question, Doug. So Chief Hague is certified through post, and the one thing I do know, yes?
I got the email right here.
They have a one, okay, they have a, I just, I don't know that much about it, but I know that he is. They have a one-year review for those who are not. That's all I know.
Let's just hold off on that for a second if we have any questions.
Again, like I said, I am acting mayor this week. I am the chief of staff. There are three departments that I definitely, that definitely do not report directly to me, fire, police, DPW. Well, actually, and Liz, for four.
We'll get clarification on that. I mean, we know that-
And I know why Doug is asking me the question. He's asking me the question because he just wants to say it out loud. He doesn't actually want the answer.
So we're, we're trying to get the, you know, the clarification of the recertification. Are they, I believe they are certified during the recertification process, and then, then they would not be certified after the process, but the process is just still going. So that's where, that's where we are, and we'll get, try to get the update.
Yeah. I mean, I completely understand.
Counselor-
I just don't know the answer to the question, and I said that at the beginning, so.
Right. I'm going to, I'm going to recognize Counselor Bullock, and then I'm going to come back to Counselor Bottomley and Ricketts, because Counselor Bullock was trying to talk earlier. Counselor Bullock.
Yeah, this is not related to any of this. I just wanted to tell Counselor Elmer that there's a delay, but if you watch it on the GCTV website, you can at least see folks, and it's a little less disorienting than not seeing anybody at all.
Thank you, Counselor Bullock.
Thought that might be helpful.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Bottomley.
Thanks. I want to say to, also to the chief of staff, I appreciate that you're here, and I know that those departments aren't reporting to you directly, so I do appreciate that. I do think it's important that we get the terms and the status correct.
I do too.
So according to the Post Commission, he is not certified. According, according to the Post Commission, he is not certified. So that may be in process, and I also had a question, actually. The mayor in the paper said that the city would be submitting information to the Post Commission for the certification process, and I'm wondering if you can share that with the city council?
I believe that did happen. That's all I know about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Ricketts.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say to Director Letourneau that I saw that Butch Hawkins had walked in, so maybe he will know because he's head of the Public Safety, so maybe, okay. Oh, sorry.
We can maybe throw that at him when he comes up in a little bit, if, if he, we can address it then. Does anyone have any other questions for Chief of Staff Letourneau? Let me just make a few comments as myself, not as the chair. First, I, well, first I'd like to welcome Aaron to your, to your first council meeting, as you mentioned, and we'll see how much he enjoyed it if he comes back. It's always the thing. And then a kind of a personal thing, I just want to go on record and thank Deputy Chief Gordon for all the work he did in the interim when we didn't have an acting chief. We had him step up, and he was a pleasure and professional to work with as far as a counselor needing someone to talk to. So I, I know if you'll pass that along, that I appreciated everything he did in, in that time. And I do encourage everyone to take a look at Vintage Days this weekend. As you mentioned, the radio station took over a window downtown and actually has the original board from the mansion house in the window at Taylor's. So it's kind of a, a neat display. It's all 30s and 40s and origination of the radio stations in Greenfield in 1938. So not a lot, but as much as is there, and that's enough. It says Northwest Mutual or something, North, that's, it's next to the, the former Taylor's building. Is there anything else for Chief of Staff Letourneau? Seeing done. Thank you very much.
I'll be here.
Under communications from other city employees, we have Fire Chief Strahan here this evening, plus David Singer and Butch Hawkins, who are going to come up and talk to us. We're going to need another chair if someone can, do you want to take that end council chair maybe, or, thank you. Oh, Paul Griffin. Chief, can I have the public comment sheets off that table before we start? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. First of all, thank you for the invite to come and speak to city council. Council president invited us to come last month. I unfortunately was on vacation, and I also suggested that we wait till the bids came back, and I am glad we did just that. So we just wanted to give an update of where we are with the, the project. And before we get into the project, I do want to say that we, the Vintage Days this weekend, part of the program is a small barbecue on the town common on, on Sunday, where the, the proceeds will go to enhance the museum at the firehouse. And so it's specifically for that reason. But everybody's welcome. It's going to be a good time. We hope to have our 1852 hand pumper on display. That's going to be the centerpiece of our museum. And so we hope everybody will come and join us for, for a good time. So with me today, I have the co-chairmans, Chairman Hawkins and Chairman Singer from the building committee to answer some questions, and also online is Neil Joyce, who is our project manager, should you have any more detailed questions about process or budget. So I would like to say that I was hoping that the, the, the highlight of the conversation was that we were successful and applied for a grant through the USDA for about just shy of $1 million. That's earmarked for the generator, the outbuilding, and some other equipment within the building. We were thrilled to get that, and we were on a pretty good high until the next day when we opened up our bids, and the bids came in higher than expected, which is not uncommon for projects throughout the Commonwealth. I've done a lot of research on, you know, because I, I probably was asking the same questions that you all were asking, like, how is it so much higher than we thought it was going to be? And I reached out to multiple people, including a, a good friend of mine to the north that's working on a fire station. They budgeted and specked out a budget, a building for 3 million and came in at 5 million. Amherst has multiple projects that they budgeted at, I think one of them was at 36 million and came in at 49 million. And so we're not alone with this. It still was a, was a gut punch when, when we found out the results, because the sub-bids came in at budget. The general contractor bid, bids came, is the one that, the most important one, and that's the one that came in higher. So Liz and the mayor frantically worked on, okay, we know this is a problem. What's a solution without having to do an override, without having a delay in the construction and without anything that would have a major impact, if you will? And so tonight, you have several orders in front of you that if approved, tomorrow night's building committee will award a contract to a general contractor if, if, if it's the wishes of the city council to approve that money, and with a groundbreaking to happen within a month or so. So we're still going to be on track, provided that we, we, we can get through tonight. I know it's going to be difficult and, and a tough conversation to have, but I appreciate everybody giving us the time to come and speak. And I will turn it over to Neil Joyce real quick, and he'll just give a quick, a quick update of how we got to where we are.
Can everyone hear me? Thank you, Chief. We're good? Excellent. Since we last met with council, we have obviously completed the design process, completed the contractor pre-qualification process for both subcontractors and general contractors, received sub-bids, and also received general bids. General bids were received on August 24th, 2022. We received three responsive bids from pre-qualified general contractors. There were a total of nine general contractors that were pre-qualified, three of whom submitted bids, and the proposals ranged in price from 14.4 million up to 16.3 million. I will note that the second-place bidder was very close on a percentage basis and a dollar basis to the low bidder. His price was 14.69 million. We have reviewed the bids. They are both, all three bids are in fact responsive to the RFQ or RFP, an invitation for bids, and are recommending award to DA Sullivan out of Northampton in the amount of 14,470, $14,470,000. for the base bid as well as the outbuilding, the alternate for the metal roof and the turnout gear lockers. Happy to take any questions from counselors.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Griffin? Chief, you wanna continue or?
I am happy to take any questions to anybody on the committee. And again, I just wanted to reiterate, this has been a very long process for this and there is a light at the end of the tunnel, if you will, and I just want to thank you all for your time and support throughout this whole process. So thank you.
Both of you feel free to enlighten us in any way you choose. Sure, you can duet whatever you like.
Good evening. I, I, I think Counselor Forgie and Liz will be able to explain to you or answer.
Is that microphone on?
Yeah, he's gonna speak.
Okay, just look.
Speak louder. Good evening. I'm not gonna speak that long. I believe that Counselor Forgie and Liz and Neil could answer your financial questions, but I could say this, that legally we cannot go forward. We don't have enough money to go forward and we'll lose the bid unless you vote affirmatively tonight for the 1.75 million dollars. We can hold off for another month on the borrowing and, and the discussion about that, which is more complicated. And I know you have a lot of things on the agenda tonight and I'd like to see, just you please focus on the 1.75 million. If that is approved tonight, then we can accept the bid. We don't have to go out to bid again and we can start building the fire station on the schedule that now presents itself with the timing of this bid. So having said that, I'll let Butch say anything and if there's any questions of us as building committee chairs at this moment, you can ask us, but I'm not, I don't want to say anything about the finances because I don't want to confuse anything. I think there's people who can help you out during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I think all, all that we could say has been said about where we at, are at. It's been a long, protracted, challenging process. We've come before you before seeking your support and you've been supported. We're here once again for the final push to get this project actually a project and we encourage you to support this funding package for us. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, but we will, we'll like to see. Chief, do you have anything you want to add that we, at this point? Okay, I'm gonna open the floor to counselors that have specific questions on portions that can go to any four of them that are here. And then we can always bounce back to a ways and means if there's something that needs to be added, but we are taking a lot of the financial pieces up in the core of the business tonight. So if we can, not avoid, but if we can kind of contain them. Counselor Ricketts, I saw your hand. Thank you.
Yes. I just want to say this has been a very long process. I can still remember when Counselor Forgie and Stempel came to some of the first meetings long ago and we were talking about this. So I just want to say that I think my constituents want whatever it's gonna take to get this fire station built. So I just want to let you know that I will be voting for everything for the fire station, even borrowing, because I feel like that is what the community is going to want. So I know at times the community may not think that I make the best decisions when it comes to public safety, but the fire station is really near and dear to my heart. It's a long family tradition. So I want it all to, and I don't think we're gonna vote on everything, but when it comes to that, you have my vote for everything the fire station needs. I want this built. Thank you.
Counselor Toronto.
Yeah, just, I, I know it's a word salad, but I was just checking, this, this was an IFB, right? Not a, not a RFP? Correct? I know that the two things are very different, but sealed bid.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'll turn it over to Neil and he can better describe that.
This was a lump sum bid proposal under chapter 149 regulations.
Okay. I was just, I'm a nerd about it now because now I'm involved in it. So I, I would just like to say like, maybe this is the wrong time. Maybe it should be later in the financial part, but I think it's, it's not surprising that in one way, when opening the bids and seeing it higher, especially right now, because at least in, in the limited talks, but talks that I've had with a lot of people in, in public projects, it, it seems to be what's happening right now. It's, it's through COVID, through private firms doing a lot of construction at kind of inflated costs. And, and the trend, this is just, I think unfortunate timing for, for something like this because at least the, the feeling out there that I've heard is these trends are probably going to come down and there's gonna be a lot more competitive process in the future. And unfortunately, this last two, three years with everything that's been going on from multiple angles has just escalated the cost. All the things we all know about supply chains, shortage of workers, all those sorts of things. So I, I understand if there is, if there were to be hesitance to putting something forward like this, but it's, I really don't see a merit behind that at this point. And it's, it's, it's an, like I said, it's an unfortunate timing. And if this were 10 years prior, 10 years later, maybe you would have been opening the bids to something that was like happier opening too, but this is, this is where we're at. And I think we, we've gotten this far, we've gone down this road and there's absolutely no reason that sometimes you just gotta, you gotta swallow it. And I, I think that's where we're at and I will wholeheartedly support the, the 1.75 for sure.
Counselor Mayo, I'll recognize you in just one moment, but let's try to, anyone that's got questions for these gentlemen while they're here tonight. Counselor Mayo?
Hi. I just need some clarification. You know, we, we were told about the, the bid that was accepted, the 14.4 million dollars. And tonight we have before us to vote 1.7 million dollars. Is that, is that 1.7 at in addition to the 14.4? Or is that part of it?
If I could, I'll have Neil briefly describe that for you, Counselor.
Thank you.
So the, the, the request before you this evening is to provide the supplemental funding that's necessary to award the construction contract. The state laws and bid laws preclude a municipality from signing a contract that they can't fund to its completion. So the, the 1.75 that's in front of you tonight is not earmarked specifically for construction, nor for any of the other project costs, but rather will help to bridge the gap between the funding that has previously been approved and what we believe will be the final amount of funding necessary to complete the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions on that? Does Director Gilman need to clarify any of that or about anything on that piece? Okay, I just want to make sure that people are understanding that money situation. Are there any other questions? Chief, I have a question and it's kind of an interesting question because I'm gonna go down a different avenue. One thing that I hear in the public all the time is how awful we're treating your fire people, keeping them stuck in a temporary building in a parking lot in the dark side of town next to an abandoned building where, you know, there's no sun half the day. Are they really hating it this much or can you tell us, are your, you know, we want this fire station, but I just don't ever want to find out that we're, that this is, you know, it sounds good when you're talking the talk, but how are your, how are your department feeling? Do they know where, what's going on there?
So that's a great question and thank you for asking that. So I get to ask that a lot too and just like everything else that we deal with, there are pros and there are cons. Some pros about this building, so we have much more apparatus space than we did at the old building. The con is it's on a parking lot in a, in a, I'm not gonna, it's an upgraded tent structure. It's a temporary structure that is semi, it's, it's a temporary building that has heat with functioning doors and provides us a little bit more space. The dorm rooms are, in my opinion, better dorms than they had at the old firehouse. However, it's a trailer and so that has its drawbacks where you have to walk from the trailer to the, to, to the building. So there are pros and there are cons. My firefighters or the firefighters that I have the privilege to work with are constant professionals and they do their job and they do what's mandated of them. And you'll have mixed reviews when you ask the firefighters. Some of the firefighters are, you know, this isn't that bad. And, you know, a couple firefighters will say, you know, at two o'clock in the morning when it's minus 20 degrees, walking down that walkway is a little cold. So as I said, there are pros and there are cons, but you know, when people ask me that question, I simply say it by this. You know, the community, the community voted for certain things. And whether it was known or not, we do what the community has asked us to do. And part of that was unfortunately go to a temporary building. And, and it's not terrible, but it's not something we want to be in forever. It's a challenge with it as spread out. If you've had the privilege to come down and anybody in the public is welcome to come down. We, you know, we take pride in everything that we do, including our temporary facility and we'd be happy to show what the complex is. And it's, it's, you know, it's a, we try to provide the most efficient, safe environment for our firefighters and I think we've accomplished that with that building. But they are very much looking forward to the construction of the new building. So I hope I answered that question.
No, Chief, no, thank you. You, a lot of the stuff we hear on council floor is, is here and there. It's, it's stuff we have to deal with. This is the stuff that bothers me. This is the stuff I want to take care of. This is the stuff that I think is my responsibility. This, you know, I don't want your firefighters to feel unappreciated or not adequately taken care of and I'll do anything I can to make sure that they go to, you know, do their job for us in a positive manner. And I don't want anyone in the public to say we've abandoned them in a parking lot and, and I, I don't want that image and I want to make sure they're not feeling that because that was never our intention.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I appreciate that and I relay that message as most of the city councils have relayed that to our firefighters and our firefighters understand that and, and they see it by, the city has been very supportive of the fire department through its new equipment, through the fire station, through contracts, through. And so I know everybody at the building down on Hope Street appreciates everything that, that the council has done for them and I don't think they feel that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Butch, Counselor Ricketts asked a question that falls under a little bit of rear purview of, of your, your other hat that you wear. Do you have any comments on this? Is there anything that you could reiterate to us on the, on the question? There was a couple of questions on this and I just want to, Counselor Bottomley, yeah.
I believe the question was on the post and the certification.
Yeah, it is. It's just, it's not working for, well, tonight that one.
My understanding is that the post review is broken down into three sections by alphabet. And the first section is A through H, which would include Chief Hague and Lieutenant Dodge. They were not included in that because they were on a leave. When they came back from the leave, then there was a 90-day period in which they are allowed to submit and the city is allowed to submit the information to the post and the post will do their review and make their decision. As to if they decide, in the case of your question, to decertify these officers, I, I can't speak for them, but if you're, if you're decertified, in my mind, you're not a police officer. But I don't think they've, they've dealt with that yet. It's a new law and I don't know how they're gonna approach that. I mean, they could decert, decertify the police department. If they decertified the Greenfield Police Department, you wouldn't have a police department. So I think they have some challenges. They're new. They're, they're a new commission. They're getting staff up and running. There's a lot of staff that they have to bring on board and I think there's going to be, you know, a lot of changes to the law. And I can remember when the first real gun law came out, the first year there was 63 amendments to the law. So I wouldn't be surprised to see, you know, changes to, to this process as well as it affects cities and towns throughout the state. But that's my understanding. The, the information's been sent in. There's a 90-day period from the time the information was first sent in for the review and we're just waiting to get the response from them.
Just for the public, and so not only is he on this committee, but he sits as the, you are the chair, are you, are the chair? He is the chair of the Public Safety Commission. So just as we're directing these questions, just so everyone knows why I asked those questions of him. Counselor Bottomley, anything more specific or did that?
No, thank you. Thank you for that information because I also wanted to say it is difficult to get information even for the public about Post Commission. It's not really clearly stated. So I'll just say that.
Yeah, even for the departments in the city, it's, it's been very difficult to get definitive answers back from them. Sort of like the days of civil service, actually.
Any other questions? And I know that was the main question. Seeing, thank you for stepping up and doing that for us this evening. I appreciate that. All right, we are gonna move on to the public comment section of that and I'll be working back and forth between in-person and online. What I'm gonna ask is when you step up to the microphone or you're called upon on the Zoom meeting, please state your name and your address and if you do that, we'll just keep moving right along and we'll get that done. Elaine Fletcher? Or your community if you're having a problem with stating your specific address.
My name is Elaine Fletcher and I live at 40 Union Street here in Greenfield. And I just wanted to say I do think the acting chief, Gordon, when he was there, because we had a situation with a certain person at 41 Union that decided to create a bomb and he handled the situation very well, very professional. And he also does programs that I hope the council will give them the money back so that they can do more like the comfort dog program because that really helps the members like myself at Green River House. And I think that the chief right now that we have, apparently he's lost trust in the public or many of the people here and I do agree with that. I don't think the mayor should have had him back. I think that Chief Gordon should be not just the acting chief when he was gone, but he should be the new police chief.
Okay.
And I always wanted to say thank you to the police that did help out with those situations around town. I mean, there were several shootings and stuff and they were shorthanded, but I think they handled it well. And thank you to the firemen because I've actually before talked to some of them about the old building and I think they are willing to be in this temporary building, you know, not forever, but I think it's important that the council honors them. not forever, but I think it's important that the council honors them with the money that they're asking for.
All right, thank you very much for coming to see us tonight.
Thank you.
Carol Letson?
I think I'm speaking in the right place. I haven't been able to come to one of the-
Can you just state your name and your address?
Carol Letson, 29 Allen Street, Greenfield, Massachusetts, Precinct 3. And I'm disappointed that Ginny isn't here tonight, it's too bad. But to the members of the city council and to the mayor, I have lived in Greenfield for five decades and a half, felt well cared for by members of the Greenfield Police Department. I am dismayed to know that my experience rested on the fact that I am white. Over the years, I have heard accounts of poor treatment of our nurses, leaving work after the night shift and driving home, being stopped by the police to make sure they were licensed and their cars were registered, over and over again. This is only one of the many situations that reflect poorly, or has reflected poorly, on our police department. To the mayor and to our city councilors, let this court process be completed, do not stand in its way. We must work to have a better police department that treats all who live here fairly. Thank you all.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Doug Selwyn. Doug, you are online, if you'll unmute.
I am online, and I'm here, thank you. Doug Selwyn, 38 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. I'm sort of looking at myself on the screen, realizing there's a blinding light behind, and I apologize for that. So I'm going to talk about the Lunt situation. I live in the neighborhood on Forest, which is a block away from the Lunt property, and I'm still very concerned with what's happening there, or, and/or what's not happening there. We have asked to have a new LSP hired, based on the fact that the person who had been making the evaluations of what needed to be done continues to lie to us, and it's a real concern. It's a health concern for the people who work there, and who are staying in the building. It's a health concern for the many young people who play on the fields, the ballfields, that join the buildings, that are, again, it's not clear whether that's safe or not. And for some reason, the city is resisting doing the work that, that would lead to truly evaluating what the health situation is. I understand there's money involved, I understand there are a lot of things involved, but we're talking about the health of people who live in the neighborhood, we're talking about the people who are living and working in the facility, and we're also talking about trust. And I think, I think trust in the mayor just came up with relationship to what's happening with the police chief. But I think the, the trust in, in the mayor and administration around how this has been handled is also a real issue, and I, I hope the city council can move forward in, in getting us real accurate information about what's happening at Lunt, and making sure that we get the repairs and cleanup that we need, so that all of us are safe. I mean, we grow vegetables using the water that comes out of, you know, the underground streams, et cetera, I want to know that they're, they're healthy. So, so our concerns are, are still, still there and have not been met, and I hope the council can do something about it. Thank you very much, thanks for the work you do.
Thank you. Susan Orgaftic, Susan, if you'll unmute yourself.
Okay, I think, okay, there we go. Hi, I'm Susan Orgaftic, I live at 45 Forest Street in Greenfield. I'm not going to talk about my opinions either on the question of Chief Hague or Lunt, I've been pretty public, I, you know what I think. The issue I wanted to bring up is that this has been treated as an issue of authority, who has the right to do what, in both cases? Who has the right to appoint people, who has the right to? This is not about, this is not about appointments, and this is not about authority. Both of these issues are about people. If you are, if we have a police chief who does not understand racism, either intellectually or in practice, then both the people who work for him and the people who are arrested by those folks are, are not able to be confident that there is fairness going on. If we are talking about the Lunt situation, we are talking about a situation where there are, there are six children who live next door to me, there are two children who live across the street from me. I want to know that the water that is going underneath their feet, and possibly is, is part of getting the vegetables that they are growing in their yards, that those are not hurting them. This is about people, this is not about who says what about whom. And I think we need, as a community, to recognize that, and to move forward with the understanding that this is about who people are and what they need. I thank you very much for your time and for the work you've done on both of those issues. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Now we'll go back to here, Dorothy MacGyver, and then Bram, after that.
Okay, then my piece.
There we go.
There we go.
We got to mute you back.
You go to everyone.
Hold on a second.
Are you muted now? I am muted.
Mute her.
I am.
Go ahead, yes, you're all set now? Nope, your mic's on now, very good. And just state your name and your community.
Okay. Dorothy MacGyver, ID at Columbus Ave. in Greenfield. So I'm addressing the police, and there have been problems within our police department long before Chief Hague was hired in 2013, but they have not gotten better necessarily under his leadership. I feel he's not taken appropriate disciplinary action in a number of cases of misconduct by his officers, and he's shown a lack of judgment in these situations, and he has allowed racism, sexism, and other unprofessional behaviors and conducts by his officers to continue with no repercussions, as was the case with Sergeant McCarthy in 2015 after the Confederate flag incident. And since then, he's been promoted to lieutenant. He and the major, the mayor have refused to accept the jury's findings of racial animus as a result of decisions that he made, that Police Hague made relating to Officer Buchanan. And this case is now under repeal, and I feel strongly that Chief Hague, under these circumstances, should not have been reinstated at this time. So I'm hoping that this, this will get straightened out, and I don't know what, whether he's going to be certified or not, but it just feels like this is, again, it's not, it's not dealing with what needs to happen with the people in our community under these circumstances, that this has continued to go on. And I also agree about the Lunt property, I'm, I'm very concerned about what's happening there, and that we really do need to get a new LSP, and we need to be taking care of the health of the people that live in this community, at that building, and in the neighborhoods. I did some canvassing this weekend and talked to people, to three of the households who were, are concerned, and have been reading about it, and are not sure what's going on in their street. And so I think that, that needs to get taken care of. Thank you. Thanks for all, thanks for all the work you do.
Hi, my name is Bram Marinus, I live on 16 Myrtle Street in Greenfield. I joined Greenfield around the same time Chief Hague did. I remember the Confederate flag incident, how the mayor at the time did make public statements that he thought it was not a good thing, that there was a Confederate flag displayed publicly, even though it was beyond a garage door. So it meant something that the mayor acknowledged the problem. Chief Hague did not acknowledge the problem, he actually had the officer returned to the Human Rights Commission as a liaison to the police department, which to me was just appalling, and I don't know how many of you guys remember that happening. So coming into a situation where we have, you know, a court saying that there was racial animus, which, you know, if you look at the, or listen to the transcripts that are available, it's very clear that there's a pattern of really horrific racism within the department. And to have the mayor not even say, if these findings are true, this is a terrible thing. Like, she, it would be lovely if she actually took, had some faith in the legal system and responded as if they were true, but then said, well, there's been some question of the, the findings, here's where the questions lie, and that's why we're going to litigate this. But I haven't heard anything personally about why there's a reason to mistrust the findings. But there wasn't even any of that said, right? There was just, we'll get to the bottom of this ourselves by doing our own investigation, and that the mayor could not say, if this actually happened, it would be horrible, and still hasn't said. And I emailed the mayor, I said, have, you know, what have you ever said about this? And she pointed me back to her comment about how the Confederate flag situation, she said that was disgusting. Great, but now she's the mayor, she wasn't then. I demand that she make a public statement that acknowledges that if the results of the trial are true, it's disgusting. Thank you.
Thanks, Bram. Emily Green?
I guess this is on, you can hear me. My name is Emily Green, and I live at 260 and 1/2 Davis Street here in Greenfield. And I also am a member of Racial Justice Rising, a local Greenfield group. I was quite surprised, when I moved up to Greenfield, after 40 years of living in the South, to find that racism is alive and well in Greenfield. And I'm going to address the police department, and not that the whole police department is at fault. But when we don't have good leadership for the people who work in the police department, how can we expect to have a just town that treats all our citizens with respect? And I was really quite shocked when I, two years here, we had the Confederate flag, and all that McCarthy could say was, well, it doesn't mean hate to me. And I think that is a pretty poor example of understanding human nature. For every black person, that Confederate flag means lynching, beatings, and torture. And for McCarthy to say what he said shows he has no understanding of what racism is all about. And I'm as much at fault for racism as anybody in this country, any white person especially. And I would really like to see Chief Hague not be reinstated, to be taken out, and let's bring in some good leadership. And let's bring in some leadership that wants to have the police department have an outside group that would do some anti-racism training with all of the police. Because I would hate to see Greenfield be the state in, the town in Massachusetts where a police shooting of an unarmed black man happens here. I hope we don't have to get to that point. So I'm asking you, please, think about what the mayor has done by reinstating Chief Hague, who was there from the Confederate flag episode that I experienced, but I'm sure there were many more. Thank you.
John McGee?
Thank you, councilors, as always, for your work, thank you for holding down one of the only spaces for the public to share our concerns. I encourage you all to vote no confidence in the mayor and in the police chief, Chief Hague. We have no reason to trust either of them to manage public safety in good faith. Hague has shown poor judgment, neglected duty, and disrespect for the law. He repeatedly gave only verbal warnings for serious offenses. He repeatedly assigned Lieutenant McCarthy to civil rights duties despite protests from the public, from the Human Rights Commission, and from councilors. Council even passed a law requiring Hague to create a civil rights officer position, and he broke that law for almost five years. Hague also retaliated against a resident who complained about being severely mistreated by GPD officers, and he got her fired from her job. As far as the mayor's supposed good-faith efforts, let's recall the community policing town hall that she and Chief Hague put on last year. They refused to answer questions about troubling data that showed GPD arrests and tickets black people at a much higher rate than white people. The whole event, the whole town hall, was really just a press conference announcing the new community resource officer. This is their idea of a forum. They choose the questions, and they're the ones who talk. If they were serious about racism, they wouldn't run from our questions, they would ask those questions themselves. It's GPD's own data, every year they write a report about it, and then they shrug their Another time last year, I personally had a meeting with the mayor and the chief to talk about a civilian crisis response program, which I'm always here talking about. At that meeting, I was barely allowed to speak. Again, this is their idea of a conversation, they talk, we listen. And unfortunately, that day, I also had to listen to Hague make disparaging, disrespectful marks, remarks about a nonprofit that does some of the most crucial and thankless work with marginalized folks in our city. And as he made these disparaging remarks, the mayor just sat there, nodding along. Since then, I've heard from others who have had to work with Hague, and they relayed similar stories of troubling behavior, particularly his disrespect towards the most marginalized people in our community. I'll be clear, as mayor of Greenfield, Roxanne was also found guilty of racial discrimination. In her court deposition, she claimed that she is not the final authority on the police department. She doesn't believe, or doesn't want to believe, that she has the responsibility to deal with the wrongdoing that goes on in our police department. For the, I'll wrap up very quick.
Thank you.
For those who aren't clear on this, the mayor holds ultimate responsibility for all departments. The mayor and the chief can go on and on about their good-faith efforts, and that they're good guys, but I don't buy it. The chief needs to resign, and so should the mayor.
Thanks, hon. I'm going to go back to Zoom, Rebecca Seifried?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Just state your name and your community for us.
Sure, my name is Rebecca Seifried, 79 Maple Street, Precinct 6. Good evening. I'm here to express concern about the city's proposals to improve community safety, namely through a task force and an audit of the police department. It's true that Greenfield needs better community safety, and given the right resources and guided by the right leaders, these initiatives could give the city actionable steps to improve its residents' well-being. But it's clear to me that the city and its police department do not have the leaders we need for these efforts to be effective. The mayor's support of Chief Hague is a slap in the face to residents who hope for a safer community. As we've heard from other people who spoke tonight, during the chief's tenure, officers have harassed residents and misused their position to threaten and intimidate. Lieutenant, then Sergeant McCarthy, flagrantly displayed the Confederate flag, which is a symbol of white supremacy, and yet the chief trusted him to investigate incidents of racial and sexual harassment, and appointed him inappropriately to civil rights positions. Meanwhile, other officers have driven police cruisers while inebriated, or have driven so recklessly that they killed another driver. None of these incidents resulted in timely or appropriate discipline by Chief Hague. I have also been witness to the chief, time and time again, showing disrespect for the city's budgeting process. Together, the mayor and the chief, as we've heard, have been found guilty of racial discrimination. So I ask, are these the leaders- So I ask, are these the leaders that we expect to improve Greenfield's community safety? They have shown their true colors, discriminating against an officer on the basis of race and protecting officers who actively harm residents through bigotry, intimidation. With the mayor and the chief at the helm of Greenfield's governance, they would surely take the teeth out of any task force and not perhaps follow the recommendations of a police department audit, wasting both the city's money and the participants' time. Sure, community safety could be improved through these initiatives, but what would really make our community safe would be rooting out corruption and racism from our city's highest offices. I implore the council to take a stand and vote no confidence in the mayor and the chief. Thank you.
Stacy Sexton?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Stacy Sexton, I live at 74 High Street here in Greenfield. And I also would like to make some public comments related to public safety, Chief Hague and the mayor in particular. I don't have mine all written out, unfortunately. I would like to, you know, extend that I also have an absolute distrust of the policing as it's been occurring to date, in particular, the leadership of so-called Chief Hague, and how he has conducted his affairs and conducted their office up to now. But I think it's also important to maintain sort of a truth of narrative around this audit idea and the idea of having a public safety commission, that this in fact was not something that the mayor initially supported, until it felt like, it seemed like she felt that she was forced to do so. And now it seems like we are getting these ideas from her as if she can champion them and claim credit. But I think there is a community fear that is justified, that should she be the one who leads these efforts or gets control of these efforts, that that does undermine the absolute purpose of having them in the first place. I think, you know, we can see with our neighbors down in Springfield, what happens when you have a community-led board that is getting undermined by the mayor who doesn't actually support their mission by not giving them the resources they need to do their jobs and to be the commission that actually hears complaints about the public. I'm not saying that that's exactly the same as what we're proposing, or what is being proposed happens here, gets created. But the intent is the same, is that if the, if the person who is in charge of providing the resources to enable something to happen doesn't want it to happen, it won't. I also think that the mayor has shown, like, despite, I, it's not that I don't just trust Chief Hague, which I don't trust him, but I also don't trust the mayor specifically because of the many reasons that others have already spoken to about the fact that she hasn't actually spoken out against the racism of the office. But in fact, she's gone a step further to publicly disparage specific individuals in our community who have spoken out and who have dared to say that she could do better. And I don't think that that's appropriate. I don't think that's the kind of leadership that we're looking for here. And it doesn't give me any faith that she's acting in good faith with these ideas. I will reserve, I guess, the other part of my comment for supporting all of the comments that I've heard thus far around the land property issues. I think that we really need to get that cleaned up. I think there's no reason to drag our feet about that. And I will encourage listening councilors to have a vote of no confidence against the mayor and Chief Hague as well.
Thank you. Daniel?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Canty-Hallowitz, I live at 109 High Street in Greenfield. And I serve the city in the role of the, as chair of the Human Services Commission. But I'm here tonight just to speak as a, as an individual and a citizen and resident of Greenfield. I know that many of us are extremely frustrated and angry about recent events in our city. They've been detailed tonight and will continue to be. It's understandable, I am too. I agree with the many residents and citizens of Greenfield who have spoken up thus far this evening, and those still to do so, that both the police chief and the mayor have erred in their professional judgments and have rendered both procedures and decisions that are wrong-minded and certainly not to the benefit of those who live and work in Greenfield. We must remember that the city of Greenfield does not belong to and is not controlled by the mayor. It is we, the voters, the residents, and the workers in the city who must exert three different things in order to be able to turn things around. One, we must be thoughtful, respectful, civil, and kind, even in our disagreements and in conflict. Two, we must listen well and carefully, especially to those whose opinions, perspectives, and vision differ from our own. And three, we must maintain our curiosity and allow new information to come forward and to be able to absorb it with as much equanimity as possible. It is only if we, each and all of us, can rely on these three things that we can bring the governance of our city to a higher level. Mistakes, big mistakes, have been made. Let's remember that it is human to do so, and yet we must hold those who make them accountable. But we need to do so with respect, with care, and by upholding our values of civility and consideration for one another. Let's listen, let's learn, let's move forward. We have and we live in a caring community. Let's model and demonstrate that with one another this evening and from this point forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesus?
Hello? Jesus Leva, 32 High Street, Apartment 6. Wow, I just totally blanked on what I was going to say.
Happens all the time.
I guess I'd like to address the councilors regarding the State Peace Officer Training and Standards Commission, the Post Commission. I think we are at the point where councilors have pretty much done everything that they can do in their capacity regarding issues around the police department. There are only really two things left to do, and those are the things that you can do as individuals and as city councilors who have constituencies that you communicate with. You can sign the public post-commission complaint that was made by the Greenfield People's Budget. If you know that, if you're concerned about the misconduct that has been brought forward concerning the police department, if you know constituents of yours who are also concerned, you can ask them to sign the petition as well. This doesn't really have any specific binding effect, but it does inform people. It informs the Post Commission, it informs the mayor, and it informs the police department of the displeasure of the people in the community at what is happening and what has happened. These are things that need to be communicated. And if necessary, you should also consider voting no confidence concerning Chief Hague. I think that individually, during previous meetings, you've all expressed your concerns and opinions, but collectively, you can also do that as well. That's information that's important for the public, too. Because not every person in the public is following every meeting, reading every newspaper article. They're jumping into learning about this at different points. So at each point, the information needs to be clear. And again, concerning the Post Commission, I am not a counselor, I am not a city official. I have called the Post Commission. They returned my call within a day. They have a phone, you can call them, they're, they won't, they won't fight. You can, you can ask them information, you can send them emails. They will respond, they are a state agency. So there really shouldn't be any mystery about this, whether it's, you know, about what the powers are that people have in this community, whether they're councilors, Public Safety Commission members, or the mayor. It's all written, it's all very well spelled out. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesus. All right, we're going to go back to Zoom. Molly Merritt?
Hi, Molly Merritt, Solar Way, Greenfield. I'm here to express my disappointment over the recent reappointment of Robert Hague Jr. as police chief. I know the council had no role in this decision and that many of you are concerned about this development as well. As you know, and as others have been mentioning tonight, Chief Hague was found guilty in a racial discrimination lawsuit in May. Members of the public have been expressing their distress over this verdict and the many documented incidences of misconduct within the GPD under Hague's leadership that the trial revealed. Chief Hague is also currently under investigation and has yet to be recertified by the Peace Officer Standards and Training or Post Commission. Many of us are seriously confused as to why the mayor has not herself simply removed him from the force in light of everything that has come out since the Buchanan trial guilty verdict. Is this choice due to external pressures from those that want to maintain the status quo at the expense of actual public safety? Or is it simply a way for the mayor to demonstrate her disregard and disdain for the opinion of the public and that of the city council? In either case, the result of this choice is the deepening of distrust towards both the mayor and the GPD, which were on shaky grounds to begin with, to put it mildly. Before the reappointment of Chief Hague, I had planned to ask the council to fund the mayor's proposed audit of the GPD, along with Counselor Bullock's proposal for a city-community-public-safety task force. It's now clear that both of these endeavors would be a waste of time, energy, and city's money. The mayor who would direct both of these undertakings is clearly only interested in returning to business as usual, which includes a near-complete lack of accountability for any wrongdoings perpetrated by the GPD. So I'm now asking the council to vote no to funding the mayor's financial order for the proposed audit of the GPD. I also want to thank Counselor Bullock and the other councilors who devoted a significant amount of time and energy to the task force's proposal and to working towards real solutions for the community safety issues we face. And I look forward to working with these councilors on these issues in the future when we have a new mayor, one who doesn't ignore, obstruct, and blatantly disregard public voice and opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Louise Amio? I think you're, you're still muted.
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yes, Louise.
Thank you. Everyone has pretty well expressed my concerns with the lack of responsiveness of the mayor to the people's concerns regarding Chief Hague and regarding the Lent situation. And I don't think I could do better than anyone else, but I would encourage the council to consider censoring the mayor and the chief in order to take a stand, a public stand, to help support the people in their objectives to keep the city a fair and healthy place for our residents. Thank you, and thank you all for your devotion to our city.
Louise, can you just state your name and community for the record, please?
I'm sorry, my name is Louise Amio, and I live in Greenfield on Madison Circle.
Thank you. Rachel Gordon?
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, my name is Rachel Gordon, I live in Precinct 2 in Greenfield. Thank you all for all of your hard work, as others have said, on behalf of our city, and thanks for taking my comment. You know, the mayor told the media a couple weeks ago that she was going to request an audit and a, and a task force. As someone else mentioned, you know, these were largely not her idea, and I appreciate all the work that did go into it by Counselor Bullock and others. And like Molly said, I also supported the idea of an audit and a task force initially. These can be useful processes if they're done well. And I know the audit is the specific issue on the agenda tonight. So I want to say clearly that unfortunately, right now, I think that this audit would be a gigantic waste of time and resources, and I hope the council will not move it forward. You know, when someone shows you who they are, you should believe them. And sadly, Mayor Wiedergartner has shown us many times that there is no way she's going to allow an objective process to take place, nor would she do anything with recommendations that she doesn't like at the end of it. The, the quote-unquote "investigation" of Chief Hague this summer was a total farce, and we have every reason to think that an audit would be too. I will also point out that we have thousands of pages of court records from the Buchanan case detailing some pretty terrible things that have been going on under Chief Hague and even before that in this department. We have years of complaint records. The Greenfield People's Budget Group recently put together a helpful timeline that you may have seen, all from public records of police misconduct. We have the jury verdict that the chief and the city broke the law and committed illegal racial discrimination, so we could start there. It shouldn't take an expert to tell us that that's a problem. I don't know what else the mayor imagines that she needs before taking real action, but I, I think that taking real action is exactly what she does not want to do. So she's kicking the can and asking all of us to foot the bill, and that is not okay. It's also important to remember that as mayor, she is a defendant in the Buchanan case, and she has every motivation to sweep problems under the rug and distract everyone from the fact that she's blowing off the judicial system, that Chief Hague somehow still has his job despite egregious wrongdoing, and that there has been zero accountability for any of this.
Okay, Rachel, that's your time, but thank you very much. Ella Condon?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Ella Condon, Beach Street. I have been going back and forth on this about saying these comments. I, I feel the need to make them, so I will be couching this with a trigger warning. I will be mentioning sexual assault in this comment. So if you need to mute me or leave the room, I would advise you to do so. I'm mainly here to address Dougie Chief Gordon's comments from last meeting. I was not present there, so I wasn't able to do it then. He brought up a recent rape case that happened and mentioned that there should be no tolerance for sexual assault. And, I mean, we have two current officers with rape allegations against them. I don't think, I, I've only seen the snapshot, so I don't know what the investigation found, but I don't think they're found guilty. But this combined with the fact that there is a sexual discrimination case in 2012, multiple officers were named in it as watching porn while on the job and bringing up pornographic content in meetings. And then I've also heard recent talk about male officers flirting with and making passes at women who are filing assault reports. And the fact is, is that sexual assault usually happens from intimate partner or family member or a close friend. And our domestic violence prevention program gets $800 a year. And also, I think W. Chief Gordon mentioned that this assault had happened in a homeless encampment. What would have prevented that wouldn't have been police, it would have been permanent housing solutions. Houston, Texas, recently, has recently seen a 60% decrease in its homeless population over 10 years because they put money towards permanent affordable housing. Not in police, but affordable housing. And I'm just really tired of hearing these comments from our police department. I remember during the budgetary process, there were multiple people from GPD who insinuated that this budget cut went through, sexual assault was going to go up. And just knowing what I know about this police department, I just find that horrible that they would say that while still having problems within their own department regarding these things.
Thank you for talking to us all this evening. Thank you for talking to us all this evening. That's the time. Joanna Whitney? Not really. You're a little light.
Um...
If you talk loud, I think we'll be okay.
I'll turn up the volume and talk loud.
That works.
Ah, perfect. Joanna Whitney, 112 Franklin Street in Greenfield. Many people have already spoken about the reasons that the community is concerned about policing in Greenfield, so I won't repeat that part. But I do want to urge you to vote no on the police audit proposal. I think that, again, as many people have said, there are existing sources of information about the problems that we are facing with the police department and the reasons that there's breakdown in trust in the community for the current police department. So I don't support the concept of a police audit. I don't see how that's going to move this difficult situation forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The last person I'm going to recognize from Zoom is Kendra. Kendra, are you with us?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Hi, I'm Kendra Sarvati, I live on Beach Street here in Greenfield. I also want to thank the council for all their hard work. My comment is short and is also related to community safety and the mayor's actions or, I guess, lack thereof related to the Buchanan verdict. I've been living here just over a year and have been kind of surprised, honestly, at how quickly it's become evident to me how little the mayor cares about the concerns and needs of the people of this city. I won't restate the many reasons for concern that others have shared regarding the Greenfield Police Department, Chief Haig, the mayor, as well as the audit and task force proposals, but I just wanted to state that I agree with them, and I also join these folks in encouraging the council to vote no confidence in both the mayor and the chief. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wendy Goodman?
Good evening, Wendy Goodman, I live on Green River Road in Greenfield. And this is very difficult and very sad for me to be here and be doing this publicly tonight. Been on the Human Rights Commission, and I resigned my commission tonight because of most of what you've heard. I'm going to read it because I keep going off in so many directions, it's such a hard thing to write. But I resigned from the Human Rights Commission tonight primarily because I feel human rights are being violated in this city, and if I serve on this commission, I feel complicit in these violations. I've come to experience the Human Rights Commission as less of a commitment from the city and more of an obligation. That is, it looks good to have an HRC. To me, during this time of turmoil in our city, what we've been talking about all night, our Lunt property is an environmental justice concern. It's a human right. The police chief and people feeling unsafe in our city is a human right to safety. In these instances, I believe the HRC should be out in the forefront and having forums and seminars and talking to people and trying to make some sense out of what we're in and some direction of where we go. Not that we have the answers, but to really pull on the community. But that's not happening. As we know, this is a mayor with a directive leadership style. She's comfortable making decisions without necessarily engaging those affected because it is within her purview. I've been willing to put up with constraints and controls, knowing that my contribution to the city was more important than my dissatisfaction with her leadership style. However, given the mayor's stance on those above-mentioned incidents, the Lunt property, the police chief, the repayment of taxes, and what we're doing with that and taking people's homes, all of this is a human rights issue. And, ah, where did I go? And especially her behavior, and, oh, the stance on the above issues, and especially her behavior around the determination that the city has acted with racial animus in the case of Patrick Buchanan. I can no longer look the other way. I won't go into at least what she could have done, you've already heard it acknowledged, at least, let's acknowledge that there is a problem, let's investigate it, let's see what's going on. But let's take it away from these individual things too, and let's start looking at it as human rights issues. And how do we step up, this is not what I wrote, and how do we step up, as Susan was saying, it's a community issue. People need to be involved in the solution, and people need to be heard, not just listened to. Our city has some serious issues at the fore, issues that do involve human rights but have been politicized. Rather than seek counsel or delegate, this mayor declares her right to do what she does. To me, right is not a guiding principle, saying it's legal is setting a very low bar. I had hoped our mayor was a better leader than that. I am going to...
Thank you.
I need to finish this, please. It'll take 30 seconds.
10.
I'd suggest using a similar town-wide process that we did before to envision the future of Greenfield and look at it to see how do we envision public safety? We don't even have somewhere we can go if we have cyber problems. We are in a different age of policing and public safety. Please consider this my no confidence in the way our city is being governed by our mayor and in our police chief. It's a scary thing to say when he's still in power.
Thank you, Andy.
But I hope you do the same. Thank you.
Pamela Goodwin?
Pamela Goodwin, 54 High Street. I drove on Route 2 all the way out here from a medical appointment. I am exhausted, but I was asked to be here. I am a member of the P.I.P. group for the Lunt, and I'm gonna say, I don't know what happened to Glenn Ayers. He met alone with the mayor and the chief's staff, I'm not sure who else was there, he could barely open his mouth. We heard the same thing over here, I think it was from either Jesus or Mr. McGee. So he wrote an oppositional piece to the mayor's big, huge downturn, and the paper did not publish it. And I heard this from Susan Gafftip this afternoon, because I discontinued the paper because it's biased. And I'm not going to pay for a newspaper when they're not telling us the truth. And the LSP was promised we were going to do this, the mayor's like, yep, I'm on board. How many times tonight have we heard the broken promises by different people here who have made comments about, I've got this covered, I'm going to do it, and reneg? I could go way back to where we asked for an ad hoc committee for housing. I was thrilled to hear somebody talk about housing, because that's one of my main concerns in the city where I was born, and it was a town then. I do want to say that I had numerous meetings and opportunity to meet with Acting Chief Gordon. I was very impressed with our conversations, I totally understood where he was coming from. I went numerous times to the police department and said, I support you people, I know we need a police force. And I also want to say that I had to go to the fire station over here, and I talked to an investigative fire person. It was interesting to go in and out of there, it felt very welcomed, picked up a report, and recently, the fire department had to send an ambulance, and I was almost unconscious by the time they came, because the other fire ambulances were all busy. So they kind of saved my life, in my opinion, I'm not that long out of the hospital. So I have utmost faith in the city councillors, I have utmost faith in our fire department, I have faith in certain members of the police department, and certainly not all. I am opposed to having Chief Haig back. I am sick and tired of the broken promises and the mayor's purview, and in my opinion, I kind of call it the ivory tower, okay? Kind of feel like it's an oligarchy or something, because it is authoritarian. It's my way or the highway. I'm sick and tired of hearing about constituent task force and constituent input. How does somebody sign me up? Nobody's reached out to me, because I was going to do the recall and walk the streets.
Thank you, Pamela.
Um, I guess I'm done. I'll save it till next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Empress?
My name is Empress, and I wear many different hats in the city, so I'm not just going to name one, I'm just going to say I wear a lot of different hats. First thing I'm gonna say, and I think the strongest thing is, I'm gonna say is, I don't care what color you are, what gender you are, what religion you are, okay? If you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. And I've heard so many things tonight, from June, from when this first happened, and everything came out about what's happening with the Greenfield Police Department, but nobody's talking about solutions. How do we move forward from this? What are we going to do as a community to heal from this? Everybody, I don't care what Facebook group you're in, you're following Greenfield, whatever it is, it's negativity, negativity, negativity. What are we doing? What do we look like to all the other cities around us? We look like a joke. We look like our city can't get our business together, that's what we look like. Period. Now, me, what I'm doing is, like I said, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. I reached out to the Greenfield Police Department when I did Juneteenth, and they came, Chief Gordon, his wife, and the detectives came and supported me in Juneteenth at Energy Park. When I had the backpack giveaway a couple of weeks ago, where I went to Lighten Woods, Oak Courts, and Greenfield Gardens, the Greenfield Police Department came out with their special operations band and helped me give out backpacks to lower-income individuals. I have a meeting tomorrow with Chief Haig at the police department, where me and him is going to sit down and talk about next solutions and how we can move this forward, because we're stuck right here, and I'm sick of hearing about it. And I want to know what the next step is and what are we going to do about it? Everybody wants to talk about what happened, this, that, that, and we're stuck on the negativity. Stop! When are we, as a community, going to stop and say, we have to do something to change this? I don't know about you, but I'm not part of the problem, I'm part of the solution, and I'm gonna do something about it. Thank you, good night.
Online, I missed one person. Muriel? Mer...
Hi, can you hear me? It's Me Ray.
Thank you. Yes, I can hear you.
No worries. Hi, councillors, my name is Me Ray Bajani, and I live on Piladi Lane here in Greenfield, and I know that you've heard a lot tonight, so I'm not going to repeat what folks have already said, but would like to support and reiterate that I would really like the council to vote no on the police audit, and for all the reasons that you've already heard. And I also, sorry, I just hopped on and I'm not sure what I missed earlier, but I'm also very concerned about the situation at the Lunt property and want to reinforce what Tonsillers Disorder and Bottomley are working on, and lots of residents in terms of ensuring that there's a full cleanup of that property to stop the contamination there. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve? Steve?
Steve Hippie?
Steve Hippie?
Hippie left.
Okay. That is going to close our public comment section for this evening. I'm going to call for a five-minute recess for the council. I'm going to call for a five-minute recess for the council. Close. We're all here. I am now going to move on to public hearings, which I'm going to direct to Counselor Forgé from Ways and Means. They're all in that subcommittee. We are back in session at 8:44. And can you lower your mic a little bit, Chris? Thank you.
Public hearing in accordance with Home Rule Charter. The Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, at 6:30 PM at John Sun Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street and Zoom. Meeting ID number is 916-5633-3922 to receive public input on the following: Approval to repurpose $57,955.54 of previously authorized financial orders for parts and repairs of the transfer station doors. Appropriate $45,000 from Fund 8400, general stabilization for establishment expenses of a public safety committee task force. Appropriate $1,750,000 for the construction of the new fire station. Rescind borrowing authorities for the construction of the new library by $500,000. Appropriate $500,000 from borrowing for the construction of a new fire station. The city council may consider the same on Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, at 6:30 at John Sun Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street and remote Zoom access. Meeting ID number 916-5633. Materials 333922. Materials can be obtained from the city clerk's office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5 PM Monday through Friday, or phone 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Sheila Gilmore, City Council President.
The public hearings are open at 8:46 PM on All That Were Read. Elaine Fletcher? Elaine, are you here?
No.
Elaine was signed up for the public hearing. I will check. Elaine, are you on Zoom with us?
No, she was here.
Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak with us on the public hearing items? Just speak. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 8:47 PM. We have a second reading that you need to read, Counselor Forgé.
City Council's second reading, September 21st, 2022. Approve to repurpose $57,955.54 of previously authorized financial orders for parts and repairs of transfer station doors. Appropriate $45,000 from Fund 8400, general stabilization for establishment expenses of a public safety community task force. Appropriate $1,750,000 for the construction of the new fire station. Rescind borrowing authorities for the construction of the new library by $500,000. Appropriate $500,000 from borrowing for the construction of the new fire station.
Thank you. We'll go into motions and orders. Counselor Forgé.
Thank you. Order number fiscal year 23-040.
Hey, excuse me. I'm sorry, Counselor Forgé. I just want to make a reminder. If you do not want to take this from the table, then you want to vote no, because it is a non-debatable motion. So, if you do not want to take this from the table, you need to vote no. It's a non-debatable motion. Counselor Forgé.
Can I ask a process question?
Yes, go ahead.
If it is not taken from the table, does that mean we have to take it up next?
It means it stays on the table.
I see. So, we should know there's a difference between not wanting it to pass and not wanting it to stay on the table?
Correct.
Mic, please. Can you put the mic on?
Oh. No, that's okay. It was just clarification on taking it from the table or not voting on it. Counselor Forgé.
Order number 23-040. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table, order number fiscal year 22-155. $175,000 be appropriated from Fund 8400, general stabilization to fund an independent assessment, audit of the city of Greenfield's police department's structure, policies, and practices. Areas to be covered include, but are not limited, the following organizational structures and governance, operating policies and procedures, department culture, hiring and promotional practices, professional standards and accountability, budgeting and planning, which was tabled at the August 17th, 2022 city council meeting. Majority vote required.
I need a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. This is a non-debatable motion. Do we want a roll call vote?
Will you remind us again, just to make sure that we're voting for what we thought?
Counselor Forgé?
Yes. We discussed this yesterday in Ways and Means. Is it appropriate to speak about what we did, or is this?
Non-debatable.
We don't do anything at this point except take it from the table.
We have to vote. We can't discuss it.
Okay.
I'm going to go roll call vote because of the nature. So, we're voting to take this from the table. Put it back in play.
Counselor Gullub?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wapienski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yes.
Does Vice President Gwyn wish to vote?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. It is taken from the table.
Counselor Forgé, could... Counselor Forgé, could you give us the recommendations from Ways and Means?
Yes, we met last evening. We had a little bit of confusion over what we should do. It was taken from the table for purposes of our discussion. And we... And anybody, please join in, if I can get this incorrect and everything else, please. We voted not to approve of the $175,000, but we did have a motion to amend the $175,000 to $100,000.
Okay, so I'll ask for clarification. Did the motion... Did the amendment pass?
Yes, it did.
Of the $100,000? Okay.
Yes, it did.
And was it a unanimous recommendation for both the no and the hundred?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
I'm just looking to see, make sure that...
I just want to make sure we're clear on both points of that.
Can I add to that? Yeah?
Of course.
Is that okay?
Counselor Gullub.
Counselor Forgé. It was a slightly... Because the motion was to take it from the table, it was slightly confusing. And we passed... If I'm understanding... 100% you couldn't understand what was happening.
You're good.
We... It passed that we amended it to $100,000, but that didn't indicate that we didn't vote on whether or not we actually supported passing an audit of $100,000.
So, the amended motion passed, but you did not get a recommendation on the motion as in its entirety?
That's correct.
Yeah, we essentially... Our recommendation was to make an amendment to the motion tonight of a lesser amount, which I would like to do right now, to move to...
Counselor Toranzo?
Lower the amount from $175,000 to $100,000.
Second?
There is a motion on the floor to amend from $175,000 to $100,000. Do we want to have a discussion on this piece? Anyone? Counselor Forgé?
Yes. As silly as this is going to sound, I would like to propose an amendment to this motion.
Would you like to propose an amendment to the amendment or to the main motion?
To the amendment.
Okay. You can do that, and you would need to make that motion right now if that's what you'd like to do.
I would like to amend the amount to $60,000.
Second?
The motion's been made in second to amend the amendment to $60,000. I'm going to open discussion on the $60,000. Counselor Forgé, do you have any backup on the $60,000?
Yes, I do. The original amount, the $175,000, was, in my opinion, excessive. The $100,000 amount is what the mayor... If I believe... I believe we had some documentation in which the mayor said that $100,000 would be an appropriate amount. But at this point, given what we've heard this evening, I believe that the $60,000 is a more appealing amount. And quite honestly, I feel that that amount would have a better chance of passing. Can I say that?
Sure, you can say anything you want. But I'm going to ask you a question, though.
I know you are.
All right. Can the $60,000 pay for an audit?
I believe it can.
I mean, I'm just... It's like saying that $100,000 for a car, but I'm only going to give you 20. You know, where are we?
Any questions?
We... Well, I think...
Can I direct that? Do we want affirmation of that?
I... May I speak?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. I think that the RFP has to... I mean, there has to be a dollar amount in place before we write an RFP to go out. And I believe that the dollar amount will get us what we need. My opinion.
Okay.
Only my opinion.
Counselor Bullock?
Okay, regarding the dollar amount, I did some research at the very beginning that showed there was multiple audits that were done of other communities that were below the $100,000 range. They basically spanned from like $20,000 to $80,000 or $90,000, I think. Included like Burlington, Vermont, a smaller city outside of Chicago, Illinois, not Chicago, a smaller town. So, I did a little research. So, I do think that this figure is appropriate and can get us what we need that can be clearly outlined in the RFP. I will say personally, many of you know that I withdrew my... The task force and the recommendation for a task force that I had put forth. I have really mixed feelings about the audit. I am listening to my fellow councilors tonight, and I listened to all of the constituents who talked today. I think that we need something. And I think that I don't have trust right now that there is going to be an adequate response and movement towards accountability and transparency within our city government and within the police department. And if an audit is going to be the only option we have to outline an objective process, then I'll support an audit, but I need to know that we have an implementation commitment and that we have adequate and appropriate oversight that is not controlled and undermined by those who have been already found guilty and overseeing and undermining processes that are already taking place.
Thank you. President Gilmore?
I'm still trying to figure out where I stand on this. I wasn't expecting it to be amended down so low, so that changes things for me. So, I'm open to listening to my colleagues to help sway me one way or the other. But I had every intention of either keep... What I wanted to do was keep this on the table, and I wanted to wait until Counselor Bullock's proposal was ready for primetime, because I feel like having the community involved is so crucial. I understand why she wanted to pull back from that in light of recent events. I don't want to vote no on this, because then it can't come back for a certain amount of time. But at the same time, I don't want to have this without community engagement. And like many of our constituents already said before, we can spend all the money in the world on this. It doesn't mean that the powers that be are actually going to implement any recommendations. It doesn't mean that it's not going to be completely biased from the outset, and I don't have a lot of trust in the process. Again, I wasn't thinking about this being amended down to such a low number, so I'm willing to listen and kind of keep an open mind. But my vote isn't in play right now, folks, so convince me.
Point of... I'm going to start rec... If we voted no on whatever amount, we could take it up again if we suspended the rules of procedure at a subsequent meeting.
Let's try to get through this $60,000 process first, and then we'll go there. But I do have a question. As I've heard both people that have spoke so far. The RFP, Counselor Forgé, as this is coming from Ways and Means, the RFP, can it have dictation for authority? Is there any way... You know, you're asking questions of... You know, you're asking questions of the authority of an RFP. Can the RFP state oversight outside of... Can the RFP state oversight outside of the executive portion of municipality? I don't know the answer to that.
I'm really not sure about the answer to that. My first thought is that, one, it all depends on how you write the RFP, but the second most important, a more important point is that this is an administrative side of government.
Right.
So it's an audit that's being called for by the mayor.
And that's my question, you know? The problem that we're having is the division of executive versus legislative government at the moment, and is there a way that the RFP could be drafted where it has some legislative input if that was the agreeance to the executive side? I don't know how that works. Director Letourneau?
Yeah.
Yeah, Counselor Mayo, I didn't forget about you.
Procedurally, so I think you're right, no, you can't outline in an RFP what would probably satisfy people in that way, but I will say that the process of, the RFP process itself and these organizations, so the number I think that the mayor gave in the beginning was based on conversation that we had with one of the organizations that does this type of thing. Basically, we tried to get like an estimate, like what does this stuff cost? I had no idea. I was like, $10,000? I don't know. I was like, a million? Like, we really had no idea. And that's where we got the 100 to $175,000 range, it was like starting at. Although, it sounds like Counselor Bullock did some research, and that would be great if it didn't cost that much. So, one, if you amended it down and there was a RFP created and it was $60,000 and it wasn't enough, we would simply know that by having nobody respond to the RFP. That's happened. That happened. So that would be, that would then inform next steps. The second part is, these organizations, and they made this really clear, this, at least this one that we talked to, when they spoke to us, just to get an idea, they made it very clear that they do not, that they are auditing leadership and that they work independently and that they're, I mean, you have to take it at what it's worth, but their oath is to get to the bottom of things and do an independent audit in terms of, they can't actually do what the mayor or the chief or somebody says. That would ruin their reputations. You know, it's up to individuals to believe that or not, because this is what, this is the work they do.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
That's it.
Counselor Toronzo?
Kind of a couple of points on this. I think that should be outlined is, so I think we need to separate the mistrust, if there, the mistrust that's been expressed, either with, you know, the police or the executive branch, and not mistrust the process of what an audit is. These are independent people, and in an RFP, you, it's a two-stage process. It's not just a dollar amount only. You have to do a, the opening of a qualification bid first, essentially, I might be getting the terminology wrong, but you're opening it on the merit, you're setting a stage and you're, you're opening a non-price bid first, and they're getting classified by a committee to, on a scale. And then after they're qualified and ranked on a non-price opening, then, then the price gets opened. So there would be qualifiers here of a small board of people that would be selected to look at the qualifications of the bidders on a non-price purpose first. And I agree with the Chief of Staff that if we lower the threshold so much, even if you think of this in comparisons as, if you're hiring a contractor to do some work and you go with the guy who's only charging you 20 bucks an hour, guess what you're probably getting? Some guy who does 20 bucks an hour worth of work. It's not going to be that great. You, you know, you don't want to pay the top cost, but we are obligated as a public authority to take the low bidder, unless we have a really, really, really good valid reason to disqualify somebody, which is hard to do. I would just caution against putting the bar so low that we either don't get anybody to bid on it, or what we get is maybe substandard quality. So I would...
Counselor Toronzo, are you suggesting that $60,000 is too low?
I think it might, I think it might be, I think it might discourage, we can set, you know, our limit at 100, but we might be now discouraging somebody who might have been just over it, might have been 65, 70. And I guess that's, that's the waffling that can go on, but like...
I'm going to go to Counsel Bottomley, but I want to update Counsel LaPienzki on what he asked me earlier. We could vote the amendment and then table it when it becomes the main motion. When you were asking about the loop of what we could do with this, so when this motion goes through, we could, we could vote it, but then you could table it at that point still, when it becomes back to the main motion. So any of these...
Point of order?
Yes.
Point of order. Counselors should have their microphones on, because any discussion that happens at a city council meeting is supposed to be public. There shouldn't be whispering, even if they're asking clarified questions.
Yeah, I think every mic is on, Sheila.
Except for Chris's.
Did you hear me? I mean, I think I was on, right? I was on?
No, I heard you answer a question that I didn't hear asked.
Oh, that was Counsel LaPienzki a few minutes before when he asked a question about the process, and I was unsure, but I got clarification from Will on what we could do to table a portion of this, or not move it, or whatever he asked. I'm sorry. All right, let's move on, and then I'll come back to you. Counsel Bottomley?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this back to, I believe trust is what this is totally about, and the taxpayers have already funded one dubious investigation already. Given the current leadership, I doubt meaningful results will be achieved. One of the main reasons the audit was proposed is in reaction to Chief Hague's actions as documented in the Buchanan case, yet Hague is the one that would work with auditors and is the person charged with implementing change. So to me, that just stretches credibility to the absolute breaking point, so I'm an absolute no on any amount for this audit.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the $60,000 piece?
Yeah.
Counselor Mayo?
That's correct. I, just like Counsel Bottomley, I wholeheartedly agree with his stance, is, we heard from a great number, a great percentage of people tonight saying that they have no confidence or trust in, in the administration or the police department or anybody who would be part of the audit process. So I don't think any amount that has been presented would weley those fears from the members, unless the, the administration stepped out and it was purely a community-based and council-based operation without any administration in there, I don't, I don't think any figure is viable.
Thank you. Counsel Healy?
Yes, I agree with the $60,000. I think it seems like a reasonable, fair amount based on the information provided here, but I'd like to point out that, you know, this is a starting point. We had somebody sitting across from us who was very passionate about doing something, right? We need to do something. And we have to remember, these are third-party, unbiased people coming into our city to audit our police department. These aren't, they're not being bribed, they're not government officials, it's, they're professionals, this is what they do for a living, we have to have a little trust in that. I really think we need to get somebody involved and identify these issues, even if it's a starting point, so there's no, you know, the, to me, it's not a question of money, it's a question of, let's move forward and get somebody in our city to at least start somewhere. And if we don't like the information we get, we don't, we try again, right? But we need to try.
Thank you. Counsel LaPienzki, and then Counsel Gullub.
So my, what I was going to say has to do with the main motion and not the amendment. Is it your opinion that I should say it now since everyone else is doing that, or should I wait?
I would really love if we stayed to the $60,000 or total rejection, you know, because that, you can't, if you're totally rejecting anything like Counsel Bottomley said, then it really is like he's saying, forget 60, I'm not giving you any, you know what I mean? So...
I know, I know, I'm just trying to figure out what, what is the right way to put forward, because my, what I want to say has to do with whatever amount we end up with. So should I wait?
We need to keep it on the motion, which is $60,000.
So I'll wait until we vote on the amendment?
Correct. That would, that would be best.
Don't go anywhere, Danny, because I'll have a question for you at that point.
Counsel Gullub, on the $60,000?
Yeah, I had the same question. I believe that any amount is excessive. I'm struggling, and I've struggled with this for a long time, and I would share more, but I can wait.
Okay. Counsel Ricketts?
Yes, I'm going to vote in favor of the $60,000, just for the fact that I just want the audit and I want to see what they find. Who we trust or not trust is not there, we're going to see the report at the end of the day, all of us, no matter what. And so, knowledge is power, but not doing anything at all? What are we going to do next? Every single month? Are we going to just have people talk about this every single month at public comment? What are we, what are we doing? What are we doing as council? We need to make a decision, we need to get some information and let the city know that we too want to know what's going on in this police department. I mean, everyone's totally convinced how bad it is, so what's wrong with getting the facts? I feel like we're just putting our head in the sand if we do nothing at all and we're going to base everything on this court case, but then we don't get to know anything about the whole rest of the department. This is not just about Chief Hague, this is about the Greenville Police Department, and it is a third party. So I will say that I'm in favor of the $60,000, and I hope we do get someone. If we don't, then they're going to have to put up another order in front of us, and until then, what will we do? That's the question we should be thinking about, is what's next?
Thank you. Counsel Elmer?
Yes, thank you. I think this is a comment that comes after this vote. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Bullock?
Yeah, I just want to, there's two things. One, I have a question, and two, I want to add a comment. I'm going to start with a comment first. The trust piece is really important, because although these are people who do this for a job, they're hired to be objective outside auditors, these auditors are, depending on who we choose, I read about audits in other departments in other cities. Burlington, the mayor had an issue with an audit that was done in Burlington, Vermont. The audit was amended because the mayor didn't like the number of police that were assigned to the police force, so the mayor asked for that audit to be amended. That's what happened, the audit was amended. So I want to believe in like the good intentions of this audit as well, but I have lots of questions after especially what's gone down in the last month. You know, I have questions about the independent investigation that was done, that we went into an executive session about, and how independent that investigation was. So I want to believe that trust doesn't matter, because this is some independent thing that's not being overseen by a city government that has just been found guilty of racial animus, but it's not wholly the case. And I think that's important for us to know. Second, I don't know if I need to do this now, or if I can do this when we come back, but I would suggest that we table this and that we don't vote on this tonight, and that when there's been, sorry.
No, that, that would be, that would be back to the main motion. We have to get through the amendments, then we would table the main motion, which is what was recommended. But I'll recognize all of you that want to do that when we get there. Is that okay? Is there anyone else that wants to talk about the $60,000 amendment to the amendment? Okay. I'm going to talk about the $60,000 amendment to the amendment. I just want to say, I want to kind of build off of what Counselor Healy and Rickett said, and then go to what Counsel Bullock just said. I want to believe that a third-party intervention is exactly what we need. I believe a third party needs to come in and say, you're right, or you're wrong, and who is right and who is wrong. And we can continue to spiral and say, everybody's wrong, or we find someone, and the best option I think we have is to hire a professional, third party, that goes and is not being paid by any department, they're being paid by the municipality, to come in, and I liked what Counselor Healy said, and this is a company that has a reputation, and so did Chief of Staff Letourneau, this is someone that has a reputation to do these audits. If we get an audit back that we feel was somehow amended, changed, coerced, then their reputation as a company is not going to do them good in the future, and it's not a very good platform. So I believe I will support the $60,000, because I think it's an amount that I'm willing to put forward, so we do take some play. Now, I listen to the public, and I listen to all of you, and I respect all of you, but I believe we've got to get a third party, because talking to ourselves isn't working. And I will vote for the $60,000 amendment. Anyone else that'd like to speak on the $60,000? Okay.
I'd like to call the question.
We don't need to call the question, because we're there. So we're, we're going to vote for the amendment to the amendment for $60,000.
With a roll call, please.
With a roll call.
So voting the amendment is a majority vote?
The amendment is a majority vote. The main motion is...
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds, but the, we just need a majority on the amendment to the amendment.
So this motion is on the $60,000, just to be clear. Counselor Gullub?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
President Gilmore?
No.
Counsel LaPienzki?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toronzo?
Yes.
Vice President Gwynn?
Yes.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, six. Double count, one, two, three, four, five, six. It does, motion fails.
The motion fails.
Back to the $175,000 to $100,000.
Now we are on the $100,000 amendment. I will open discussion on the $100,000 amendment, just because that's where we are now. Do we have any discussion on the $100,000? Counselor Gullub?
Yeah, I'm, I've had a lot of conversations with people over the last month, really, really grappling with this, and I'm still, still grappling with this right now. And people who know me know that I want more than anything to have a process that brings to light, a fair process that we can trust that brings to light whatever racial injustice or lack of public safety is in this town, or that brings to light that it's not there. But two things. One is that we need to understand that an audit of a police department is very different than an audit of finances. Police departments don't, it's, it's not like you just count all the numbers and it's all there straight on the paper. I had, I've had long conversations with friends at the ACLU about this, and repeatedly they said audits have led to whitewashing and covering up of things that need, that light needs to be shed on. And given the fact that, and I talked to Danny about this, just like you just talked right there, the fact that the mayor would be in charge of this, just like she... right there, the fact that the mayor would be in charge of this, just like she, just like the independent audit, just like the independent investigation that was used to reinstate Chief Hague, she was also found guilty by a court of law, and there's plenty of information that's come to light in the last month, and in the last several years, and action has not been taken. And so, I cannot in good conscience vote to allocate any amount of money to a process that I do not believe is trustworthy. I agree, we need to do something. The town needs to do something, but the mayor, to put that on us amounts to gaslighting. And there needs to be, in order for there to be public safety, there needs to be trust, and there needs to be accountability, and reinstating Chief Hague, and is not holding, is not accountability. Yeah, and I think that any amount is excessive at this point.
Thank you. Just a reminder, we're talking about the $100,000 amendment. Main motion still has to come up in our third round, but right now we're at the $100,000. Counselor Toronzo?
While I understand that the events of the last month or so might have changed some people's minds as to wanting this, I do want to remind that, as was mentioned earlier, this was our proposal to amend down from 175, which was the original ask, to 100,000, and also have some of that money go towards a task force. If the task force isn't ready to be implemented, I don't think that means we should just stop this dead in the tracks. And while I understand the, some of the apprehension upon what might happen after the audit's done, and even if it came back really positively shining, people would want to deny it, or if it became really bad, of course, we'd be wanting, you know, accountability for it, and action. And that's the time to be more angry about, or have more of the mistrust towards the correct parties. The reason why I think that we should kind of follow what we had brought up to begin with on this, add 100,000, add an audit, is if we see that there's problems with certain players right now, and there's maybe some other lesser, well, not to say lesser, but not as big of problems, but have been talked about from other parties in this department, wouldn't we want to see essentially how deep this goes? And I think it's important to remember, having an independent audit is, while I like the idea of the public, of the other committee aspect happening, I think we also have to remember that nobody on that committee is a professional, and doesn't do this all the time. So I think it's important to balance the weight of having independent professionals that do certain aspects of this teamed with the public committee that we're trying to make come to fruition. Those two things together, I think, would be effective. I don't think not having an audit and just having a public input would really do a whole lot by itself. So that's why I'm still in support of this happening. We didn't, I was willing to concede to the lesser amount that I didn't agree with, hoping that maybe we'll get some money, but I still think it's really essential that it happens, and I definitely don't want to spend 175 on it. I think 100 would be fine, and we asked for it, so.
Anyone else that would like to speak on the $100,000? Counselor Ricketts, and then Counselor Lapinski?
Do you remember what I said about the 60,000? That whole thing, just for 40,000 more, so yes.
Counselor Lapinski?
So, this is not a commentary on it, it's just a reminder. The next thing we're going to do is vote on whether to amend down from 175 to 100. If you vote no on the amendment, the amount goes back up to 175.
The main motion will be reintroduced that needs a two-third majority at 175?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Counselor Mayo?
Again, just like at my vote on the 60,000, the 100,000 does not gain trust. And that's really what we heard tonight, was a lack of trust by, from the administration time and time and time. So I think what we're dealing with is, you know, for a professional liar, who is, for the last couple of years, done a great job at bamboozling this council, and the people in the town. And that there's, $100,000 won't fix that. If we had, again, something separate from the, that the administration wasn't part of the auditing process, and the city council was, and the people of Greenfield were, then I would be in support of some money. But because the administration piece is still going to be in there, I cannot vote for, I cannot vote for any amount that's been proposed at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilmore?
So I think that this amount, so speaking specifically to the amendment, I feel like this is the right amount. Going back to what I said earlier, I feel like, you know, and we'll get to this with the main motion, but I'm bringing it up because people had mentioned earlier the idea of trust, and whether or not we need to do this. I absolutely do believe we need to do this. I feel like doing it without citizen engagement is going to be useless, but I think a quality auditing firm, so that when we are ready to do these both together in tandem, we've got it there. So I would ask people to support this amendment.
Thank you. Counselor Elmer?
I just want to make explicit something that people have been dancing around. When the jury verdict came out, the mayor said that she was going to do something about it. The assumption was that she was going to react to the jury verdict. Instead, what happened is she launched a separate investigation, a secret investigation, of a different matter, about a conversation that was not part of the jury verdict, and then presented it to us as if she had solved the whole problem. And it was, it felt to me like a bait and switch. It felt like a whitewashing, and that's where the trust broke down. I'm very sorry to hear that Counselor Bullock has withdrawn her proposal. I think that is the direction we want to go in. The audit was not the city council's idea, it was the mayor's idea, and I think given past behavior, it's, whatever the audit said would likely be put forward as proof that everything was fine, and that the chief should stay in. So I'm sticking with a no vote. I think this is a waste of money. Without the action plan following the audit, why have the audit? Thank you.
Counselor Bullock, were you going to talk on the 100,000?
Yeah, I, so, I will say that I think that this is more in line with the amount of money that we would potentially need for an audit and feasibility studies, when the time comes. I want to echo that I would like to table this. I think the time is not right. I think that the reason that the task force was withdrawn was because there was a lot of trust that was broken down, and there was no longer credibility there, in terms of who we could get to serve on that task force, and who we could get to collaborate. So we need to rebuild that trust. The executive branch, the mayor, has plenty of things, of action steps, that could move forward, in terms of taking steps towards accountability, without an audit. We have an HR department, we have hours upon hours of trial that I've listened to, 14 days of. There's plenty of things that, of recommendations that we could move forward, and like many of the public said today, we haven't had a direct address from the mayor that has addressed the finding, the trial, the findings of the trial, that has addressed the reinstatement of Chief Hague. All of those are steps forward before we get to an audit, before we get to a task force, to rebuild trust, collaboration, communication, all of those things. So I support $100,000 when we get there. Right now, we need our mayor to step up and address the issues that have been brought to light, and the executive session was a mess, the independent investigation was a mess, and it caused more problems. There was no reason to rush into reinstating Chief Hague. There could have been clear steps forward, and we didn't get that, and it's, and there is a confidence that's been lost because of it.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize Counselor Forgie, but I'm going to talk first, so I'm not always the last word as the chair tonight, and I just want to talk about, I'm going to support the $100,000, but I just have a question. I have a question, we keep hearing that the administration's going to control the audit. I've heard it said by counselors, I've heard it said, if we're hiring a third-party investigation of an outside source, whether we hire them, let's say we hire them, and not the executive side, I'm just, you know, how is that any different if it's a third-party outside person? If the mayor hires them, or the council hires them, and they're third-party, and they're doing an independent investigation, how is that different? How does the administration get involved? If we hired them, as the executive didn't, legislative somehow hired them, and we got the results, how would that then go to the administration is not, is slanting the audit? I really genuinely don't know the answer to this, because if they're not involved, and they're a third-party outside, isn't it, the person that's ordering it is the relevant part? If they don't have control over it, can someone tell me what I'm missing? Counselor Healy? Counselor Forgie, yes. Yeah, I didn't know if there was someone that was going to tell me what I'm missing. Counselor Forgie?
I don't know if I can answer your question, Counselor Gwynn, but I can say that when you do an audit, like when we do a financial audit every year, whatever that audit is, there's always findings. Then, the piece that connects everything to me is, what do you do with those findings? So if they violate mass law, that has to be reported. If the findings are procedural, and here's the suggestion, that has to be implemented. That's where I think we're kind of breaking down right at the moment, is you can reject the findings. I mean, you've paid for the report, you can actually reject everything if you don't agree with it. That wouldn't be prudent, and be a waste of money, but the audit itself is to help us become better, and understand where we could be better. So there are many different variables with an audit, the way I look at it. And that, again, addresses some of the concerns that we've heard here this evening, is how do we, how do we quote-unquote "trust" the data that comes back from the audit? That's really what people are saying. And again, that is the reporting piece, which will go back to the administrative side of government. It will be made known to us, it will be made known to the public, but the implementation of all of that, again, goes back to the executive side, and whatever the executive side needs in the way of funds to make those changes will come back to us as council. So that's, that's one, perhaps, solution that answers the question. However, my own personal opinion is, $100,000 is too much money, and I will not be voting in favor of the $100,000 motion. Thank you.
Counselor Healy?
Point of order, if you vote against the 100,000, it goes back to 175.
Yes.
I understand that, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I think we're kind of getting stuck on one situation within the police department. We've had many violations that have been brought forth in front of us, harassment to a nurse, her losing her job, Confederate flags, all these things happened within the police department, and we're worried about one thing. I'm worried about solving the entire problem. I want, I want a third-party to tell us what we're doing wrong, and how we could fix it. But if we refuse to put a little trust and faith in the system, then we're never going to come up with a solution, and we're just going to keep pedaling, and pedaling, and pedaling, and the situation's going to get worse, and worse, and worse, and worse, right? So I agree, I'll pay the 100,000. I just want to see something done, and have some recommendations come to us from a non-biased party, so we can make a decision as a community later on implementation with the task force, if that ever does go forward, to say, "This is what they recommend. How do the citizens feel about their recommendations, and let's implement something?" But if we don't start somewhere, it's never going to happen.
Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, I just wanted to answer your question to some degree, Dan.
Thank you.
So, the way that, my understanding, and I asked the mayor when I met with her, how this process was going to be moved forward. So the mayor puts together herself, and, you know, whoever else she chooses, to choose who, you know, who, from the application she gets in the RFP, you know, who applies, who she wants to move forward with, of course, based on, based on numbers, as well. There's a scope of work that needs to be put forth. I initially had questions about the scope of work. You might remember, I sent an email out asking a bunch of questions of the mayor a couple months ago, when this first came, about the scope of work. That scope of work doesn't necessarily include what we do about the problem. And so, I think the scope of work is like a key thing here, that, yes, if we want an audit to go forward, let's as a body say to the mayor, and collaborate with the mayor, and say, "Here's what we want to know about our police department. Let's not just have such a broad scope of work, and throw $100,000 at a problem, and expect an outside entity to come in and solve all of our problems." Because that's not what happens. If you read these audits from other communities, they're really, they're just doing a lot of the work that many of the community members have done over the last few months, to put together timelines of misconduct, to put together anonymous, anonymous methods for independent review of misconduct, where people might be afraid to report. So, scope of work is key here, in making sure that it's outlined appropriately for what we need. I'm not sure that this proposal, as it is, has that. And what I'm saying of why I think we should table this, is because if we need, we, I do think we probably need an audit, and I think we need to make sure that if we're going to spend $100,000, $60,000, $175,000 on that audit, that there's a collaborative process with more credibility moving forward, and we've clearly outlined what we need within that audit, within that scope of work, and that we can say to the public, this isn't just the executive branch of the city saying we need an audit, picking the auditors, designing the scope of work on their own, putting it forward, potentially amending and influencing based on what documents you put forward for them to see, and have access to. That there is appropriate oversight, and this doesn't have that yet. So I think if we want to do diligence, and do all the things that Counselor Healy's saying, that Counselor Ricketts, you're saying, we need more involvement before we get there for this proposal.
Thank you. Counsel, President Gilmore? Counsel, President Gilmore?
Yeah, I wanted to answer your question also. Um, about five years ago, we did a climate survey in my workplace and as most of you probably know, I'm a union leader and have been for a long time. They found in that climate survey that the morale for the lowest-paid staff was very, very, very low. Um, so, the union leaders tried to go to leadership and say, you know, we've got some ideas, we know what the staff want, we are the staff, they talk to us every day, here are things that we can do to improve morale. We, we, you know, have been talking to them about this for years. They never did anything. So they paid for this survey, they collected the data, they published the data and then did nothing with it. So it's, you know, it's fine for me because that did not come out of my pocket, but this is money that is going to come out of my pocket. I pay taxes like all of you and I am happy to spend money to invest in our community to make it better. I don't want to spend money on data that we're not going to use or that we are not going to use in a trustworthy way. And that's why I want to, when we get back to the main motion, I want to table this until we're ready for something that involves the community and our citizens.
Counselor, um, let me go back to, where's my list? The one that I put there. Counselor Toronto?
I just wanted to point out as a correction, the mayor doesn't get to select who gets to, um, bid on this, whenever it goes to bid. That's a, has absolutely no control over that unilaterally. Um, it is, it is a board. There are qualification-based, uh, decisions that are made before any, before any scope of work is even touched on, really. So, that's all.
Counselor Lapinski and then Ricketts?
Uh, Counselor Ricketts was first.
Okay, Counselor, thank you. Counselor Ricketts?
Okay, so, I totally respect all my colleagues here, but when I'm listening to what everyone has to say, it's so clear that none of these amounts are going to pass with enough votes. So, is there a way that we can move on because we have a lot on the agenda and I'm actually, um, going to have to go soon unless we can get moving on this? Not because I'm not interested, I'm, I'm hanging in the best I can, but the, people do not want the hundred thousand, they don't want the sixty thousand and there's people who don't want any of it at all. There's only thirteen of us, it's really clear that it's going to be tabled, so.
I, let's.
Can I make a motion right now for it all?
No, you cannot.
No.
So, somebody do what, what's right.
You can make a motion to call the question on the amendment is what you can do.
Yes.
And I'll second that.
Okay. I make a motion to call the question?
The amendment.
Second.
There's a, there's a motion to, has been made and seconded to call the question on the amendment of the hundred thousand dollars. Roll call vote.
This is a vote on calling the question.
Calling the question on making it one hundred thousand dollars?
No. You're just calling the question that we voted.
Yes.
It's okay.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski?
Yes, and thank you, Counselor Ricketts.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yes.
Vice President Gwynn?
Yes.
The question is called. This vote is on whether to amend the main motion to one hundred thousand dollars. Clear?
Yes.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
No.
Thank you. President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forgé?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yes.
Vice President Gwynn?
Yes.
The motion passes my majority. The motion is amended to a hundred thousand dollars.
All right. Now we are moving to the main motion amended to one hundred thousand dollars. This takes a two-thirds majority, not a majority vote. I am going to open discussion on the total majority, uh, vote because I need to. All right. Counselor Toronto?
Uh, I'm going to move to table this.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to table.
All those in favor?
Is tabling a debatable motion?
Aye.
Wait a minute. Wait. Why do we need a roll call?
Motion to table is non-debatable motion.
Be a big boy, you can hear a no.
Yeah, it's non, it's non-debatable.
It's a non-debatable motion.
So, the motion is on the floor to table the hundred thousand dollars as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I believe if a counselor asks for a roll call, it's required, but. Um, sorry, did you request a roll call?
Okay, roll call then.
I didn't hear you. My, my apologies, too. Main motion, a hundred thousand dollars to table.
Motion to table is on the floor.
So we're now voting on tabling the motion or not?
As amended.
As amended to a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Uh, excuse me, I, I stepped up for a moment, what, what, what are we voting on?
You're voting on a motion to table the motion as amended to one hundred thousand dollars. So this is a motion to table.
Point of order.
Yes, yes.
Point of order. I don't think he can vote on this.
Why?
If he wasn't in the room during the discussion. Uh, let's move on.
So.
I just, on this vote for that piece, on this thing, if he wasn't in the room, then I don't think he can.
I wasn't aware that he was.
That's what he just said.
I didn't.
He said he stepped out. No, I'm just saying on this motion.
I didn't, I didn't say I stepped out, I said I stepped up.
Okay.
Just a, just a straight, just a straight mic, my, my cord.
Oh, perfect then, okay. Misunderstanding, then, then, the, the point of order's been made and rectified. Moving on.
Counselor Mayo, did you vote yes or no to table?
Uh, yes, to table.
Thank you. Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Toronto?
Yes.
Vice President Gwynn?
No, I meant.
Yes.
The motion is tabled.
Thank you. Moving on.
Okay.
Um, Counselor Forgé, are you awake and moving forward? We're on the approval to repurpose fifty-seven-nine, um, for parts and repairs of the transfer station.
Sure.
Director Warner is here if we need him. Go ahead, Counselor Forgé.
Uh, point, point of order, before, before we do that, it's, it's fine, we did that, uh, but just so you know, Vice President Gwynn, I sat on my comments for about fifteen minutes because they were on the main motion, we didn't get to discuss the main motion. If that was going to happen, you should have just let me know, I would have made them before like everyone else.
I, I, I apologize because when we got to the main motion, why was that? Because?
Oh, because I tabled it.
Oh, because it was a motion to table, a motion to table's non-debatable.
That's, that's correct.
That's where.
Which just, which just seems like, um, I was abiding by the rules and then I didn't get to say, fine, whatever.
No, I would say that, I would say that, uh, I was unaware that the motion to be made to table would be so quick as the first person I recognized, so then it precluded you from, uh, being able to comment, which was not my intention.
No, and I also had my hand up before, Counselor Toronto, but again, it doesn't really matter, just letting you know for next time, that's what happened.
Thank you. Counselor Forgé?
Thank you. Order number fiscal year twenty-three dash oh-one-six. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegardner and in accordance with Massachusetts general law, move that it be ordered, that it be ordered, that the Greenfield City Council approves repurposing in the amount of fifty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty-four cents of previously authorized financial orders for the parts and repair of fin, of the transfer station doors. The description is Deerfield Street retention wall, the account number is four zero one-eight four nine nine zero point five eight four one in the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents. Silver Street, account number four zero one seven four nine nine zero point one eight four five for twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents and generator, account number forty one eighty-one nine two zero point five eight five zero for thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and eleven cents for a total of fifty-seven thousand nine fifty-five and fifty-four cents. Majority vote is required. There is rationale attached to this and Liz is with us here this evening and so is Director Warner from DPW who can answer any questions.
Do I have a second to this?
Second, Ricketts?
And did you have a recommendation from committee?
Yes, this was a positive unanimous recommendation.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, that's unanimous. Counselor Forgé?
Order number fiscal year twenty-three dash oh-two-six. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegardner, an order appropriate one million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for new fire station, ordered that the sum of one million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars be appropriated for the construction of the new fire station and to meet said appropriation, the sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is to be transferred from Fund sixteen twenty-seven bond premium and the sum of one million dollars is to be transferred from Fund eight four oh-two capital stabilization. Two-thirds vote required. The information that's listed below also explains the balances in our capital stabilization funds and it's broken out, general fund and other, uh, funds as well.
Motion's made.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Ricketts.
This was a positive unanimous recommendation coming out of Ways and Means.
Counselor Lapinski?
I have to know why this order is in lowercase and all the other ones are in capitals.
Okay, let's go in.
Um, I'll get a memo from the clerk. Um, next. Seeing none, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Seeing none, that passes unanimously.
Thank you for waiting. Yes.
Um, next motion to order, Counselor Forgé?
So many motions, my goodness.
Page sixteen?
Yep. Order, uh, order number fiscal year twenty-three dash oh-two-seven. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegardner, an order to rescind borrowing authorities, order that upon recommendation of the mayor, vote to rescind the following borrow, borrowing authorizations by five hundred thousand dollars. Revised authorization, nineteen million forty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Majority vote required.
Second.
Go ahead.
It's been made and seconded by Lapinski?
Yep, this was tabled. We, we tabled this order at, um, our meeting last night, so there is no, I mean, we just tabled it, there's no recommendation coming out.
You have no recommendation, but there was no, you didn't change it, you just did not, you, you tabled it?
We tabled it in committee, yeah.
Was there a reason for?
Yes, because there, there has been some discussion, we talked about this at the first Ways and Meaning, uh, Ways and Means meeting we had at the beginning of the month, um, that there was some discussion and some confusion around exactly what the borrowing meant. So in order for the council to be able to, um, look into and understand the borrowings and the offsets and any other pieces, um, that were in the mix, we put a hold on it. Also, uh, at the time that we met at the beginning of the month to discuss this, we didn't have a free cash figure at the time, that has since come in. So, this is put on hold, um, tabled for one month, it, it will be brought back into Ways and Means for further discussion and recommendation and we will vote on it in our October meeting.
Let me just remind you, that's if the council chooses to table this because if the council.
That's correct, that is if the council chooses.
If the council moves to move forward with this motion as it is, that will be taken up tonight. Counselor Lapinski?
Yeah, I need clarification, um, on, on that, Counselor Forgé. When you say the committee tabled it, do you mean that you did not discuss it or that you are recommending that we table it?
It is a recommendation that the council table it, we discussed it.
I see.
Quite a lot.
So moved to table.
I don't know where this singing is coming from, but anyway. So we can vote on it though, like, because we don't.
We, we, we had a, we had a motion to table, which does not have a second yet, but there was a question. We could vote on the motion this evening if it wasn't tabled. Yes, the motion is on the floor, so if we want to vote on the motion, uh.
The recommendation was that we needed more time. That the committee wanted more time, but the full council could vote on it if they wanted.
That is correct, because, just a reminder, and I think it's, any subcommittee is only a recommending advisory capacity. We at any time, and it happens in A and O where we send stuff right to the floor because of timing, this is that situation. If, if the council so wants to, they can vote. There is a motion to table. We need a second if we want.
It has been seconded.
Okay. There's a motion to be, a motion made and seconded to table, it's non-debatable, correct? Roll call vote.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Sorry, Counselor Bullock. President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Toronto?
Yes.
Vice President Gwynn?
No.
The motion passes by majority.
Counselor Forgé?
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, it's, uh, order number fiscal year twenty-three dash oh-two-eight. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegardner, an order for the construction of a new fire station. Move that it be ordered, an additional sum of five hundred thousand dollars be appropriated for the construction of the new fire station and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of five hundred thousand dollars pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter forty-four or any other enabling statute and the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept and expand any federal and/or state grants available for this project to be used to reduce the within appropriation and further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of this project. And further, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, the premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes hereunder, less than such, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs and amount, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for the project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so advised. Two-thirds vote required.
Second, Ricketts? Second, Ricketts.
Motion's been made and seconded. Recommendation from committee.
We also recommended that the council table this as well until the October meeting. This is, there are two pieces here. There is the piece that, the way it's explained is there is a piece that will be borrowed for the fire station, but in exchange for that, there will be a $500,000 reduction in the borrowing for this library project due to library funds that were turned over to the mayor, I believe, last September. So this is sort of a two-piece motion.
I see, so, so moved to table.
Motion's been made and seconded to table, non-debatable, roll call vote.
Counselor Goleb.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Bullock.
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgé.
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts.
No.
Counselor Torondo.
Yes.
Vice President Gwynn.
Yes.
The motion passes by majority to table.
Yep. Order number fiscal year 23-033. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves and accepts the attached resolution titled, quote, "A Resolution of the Greenfield City Council to Agree to Financial Assistance from the United States Department of Agricultural, Agriculture Rural Development," end quote. Majority vote required. The resolution states the following. "A resolution of the Greenfield City Council to agree to financial assistance from the United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development, be it resolved that the Greenfield City Council agrees to accept financial assistance from the United States Department of Agriculture," parentheses USDA, and parentheses rural development, "in the amount of $987,000 to finance the fire station project, be it further resolved that the City Council of the, of the City of Greenfield authorizes the mayor to sign all documents relating to the USDA rural grant development loan and/or grant."
Second, Ricketts.
Motion's been made and seconded.
This was, this was a positive unanimous recommendation. The chief spoke about this this evening at the beginning of our meeting. This is a real win for us, and a lot of people worked hard to get it, so we are very thankful.
Counselor Lapinski.
Yeah, I'd like to make a friendly amendment in both the upper and lower sections of capital letters. I'd like to change the name of our great nation back to the United States with an S at the end.
So forth. Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, I see that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, that's a positive unanimous vote. Also this evening?
Yes.
As I'm chairing tonight, I've asked Counselor Goleb to read the A&amp;O pieces, but I will follow up if there's discussion on, on what was done. Counselor Goleb.
Upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner, in order amending the code of the City of Greenfield, move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the City of Greenfield, Chapter 355 Sewer Use, as written in the strike through attached heretofore. And further amend the code, Chapter 355, with the following global changes. Change town to city. Change DPW superintendent to director of public works. Change policy and water and sewer service and user fees to water and sewer customer service policy. And further amend the index of the code, and further, that no substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
The motion's been made and seconded. As stated by Chief of Staff Letourneau this evening, this is going on to our 2020 code review. When we reviewed the code in A&amp;O there, and the department submitted it, it got delayed because of COVID, and these are coming forward. Ninety-nine percent of these are maintenance. They are things that were changed on the state level, the legalities, and so then we have to change our code to match them. This received a description from Director Warner and a unanimous positive recommendation from A&amp;O to accept the changes in the strike-through version. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, that passes. And thank you for that, because we have some things that have to get done that needed this in the code to be accomplished, so thank you from the DPW on that. Counselor Goleb.
Upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner, in order amending the code of the City of Greenfield, move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the City of Greenfield, Chapter 415 Water, as written in the strike through attached heretofore. And further amend the code, Chapter 415, with the following global changes. Change town to city. And further amend the index of the code, and further, that no substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
Second, Ricketts.
Motion's been made and seconded, same thing, it's a update. Counselor Lapinski.
So I, I am in favor of this, obviously I just voted for the last one, the same thing. I'm noticing that both of them have the phrase in it, change town to city, and so on that subject, I just want to say, I know there's a lot of people in Greenfield who object to that change of word, and because it was called a town for a long time, even after it became a city. And so, very briefly for members of the public who are watching, who don't understand this, it's not a conspiracy to make this, you know, a postmodern New York-y kind of place. Basically, the difference between a town and a city in Massachusetts is a legal designation, it has nothing to do with size or shape or form, and we change to legally be a city, but we're allowed to call ourselves a town, and then Governor Baker disallowed continuing to call a city a town, so places like Greenfield, East Hampton, North Adams, we're forced to call ourselves cities. And so this change really is just in compliance because we have Governor Charlie Baker, and we can't do anything about it. And so it's, it's not, everyone knows my position on this issue, where I don't want to become super modern, so I'm saying this as someone in my position, so that you know that I'm not one of the people trying to do that. I don't think this is a conspiracy, this is just a legal thing that the governor's making us do.
Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Mike had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had one question of clarification, maybe.
Sorry, Counselor.
Could answer this. I noticed the area about leaking services, and that the, the, the change in the text on that is that the, the city will repair or replace from water main to the curb box. The curb box is like the bottom of the driveway shut off, right, the long shut off, you gotta stick the pole under the ground?
Yes. The curb stop generally sits in the tree belt or the property line.
Right.
That's the shut off from, from, obviously from the curb to the house, when they have a leak between there and the house. There's also a shut off in the middle of the road, which we, we, we call a corporation. You gotta dig down to shut that off.
Right. Which is why the curb boxes are there, right, to have an easier shut off to the house, the whole house.
Correct, in a hurry.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, but the owner's responsible for the repair replacement from that to the building, which I know didn't used to be the case, but weren't we already doing that? That's been my understanding in construction for at least the last 10, 15 years probably, is that the owners have been responsible for everything after that, after the curb box?
So it changed in 2016, I believe. I was not here, it was the previous director, previous mayor. But the, the policy that we review every year, the, the mayor and I, we take out of the code. It was always stated in the water and sewer policy that a service line is the homeowner's responsibility. It's always been worded that way.
Right.
Customary years ago, when we had the time, the budget and everything, we would schedule and go in and assist the homeowner. And just for a little more clarification, we still go in and we clear free of charge when they have backups, when we're talking sewer. We still go in and TV it to determine where it's broken, if it's sewer. And we, we also assist in any way we can when there is a water break. We'll put them on hoses with the neighbor, so nobody's without water, so on and so forth. So we still provide all the other services. We just, in 2016, I believe it was, late 2016, we abided by the policy in the code at the time, that it's the homeowner's responsibility.
Okay. That, that was just kind of my confusion as to why this is now, if that was already existing policy, why we're adding it to the language now? Does that make sense to anybody else?
A lot of.
I, I think what you're trying to say is, it seems like it got done backwards, and I had no control over that, I wasn't here. I know exactly where you're coming from. The, the policy should be produced from the code.
Right.
And the policy was changed, was signed off with, by my predecessors, but the code wasn't changed, so this is bringing us up to date.
Okay.
So a lot of these maintenance pieces from other departments too and things, you'll see that we, we've been following a policy, but it didn't necessarily apply to our own code. So now they're putting the policies that we've, some cases have been using for many years to make sure they're in the code. So this will put us all, our policy and our code will now match.
Right. So yeah, I guess that was just my confusion, that if it's not, if something's not in the code, can we just create a policy that overrides that? I'm just, out of curiosity.
The answer is yes. But we, but the code is where you refer to with problems, and if the code is then not in agreement with the policy, you open your, open up the, the thing where it's not clear to anyone, and when something's not clear, then you can talk litigation and things like that.
That is kind of what my.
By rectifying this, we stop that, and we follow code and policy in unison.
And if I may, there, there was a couple of drivers behind this. We all have heard me talk about our consent order through DEP. You'll see fog, it's late for everybody right now, let's talk about fog quickly, but fats, oil, grease is in our system, so there were, there was changes made for that, and I think the big thing was clarity, exactly what you're talking about, less gray areas when it comes to policy and the code matching.
Okay. Cool.
Perfect. Did I forget anybody else? Sorry, I didn't mean to. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Counselor Goleb.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council votes to amend the City Council Rules of Procedure 5658, Rule 8, Order and Disposition of Business, Section A, Agenda, Subsection 1, to add 10, 10 minutes time for communications with the mayor and superintendent of schools and school committee. Majority vote required.
Second.
Go ahead. Is this the version, this is not the version we voted on.
At the bottom of it, doesn't it clarify what was voted on?
No.
As a recommendation?
No.
Doesn't have it.
The, the problem, what we did was, we changed the language that said, and I don't have it right in front of me, because it's not here. It's 10 minutes, and it. Motion to table.
Second.
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 All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is tabled. We'll bring it back.
Keep, keep trying.
Just to clarify, just so we know, we added new language to the 10 minutes that said that basically it's 10 minutes for the mayor or the school committee, not inclusive of the questions of the council, so, which we added to the language, and that.
Yeah, that's there, that you were just adding the 10 minutes.
No.
We never had a time before.
No, but, but the, they wouldn't add, in A&amp;O, they wouldn't add the 10 minutes unless we had the language that said excluded the, the questions, so we added that, and that's not in this draft, so.
If that's the case, couldn't we amend it while it's on the floor?
It's just easier if we bring it back in the, in the language. Counselor Forgé.
Well, I'm looking at this motion right now, and it says an excerpt from the June 8th, 2022 Appointments and Ordinances Meeting. And it goes on, and under Agenda A, Item 4, there's a cross-out of the Pledge of Allegiance.
That's nothing, that, that's.
Well, that's why I'm wondering why this is even included in this.
Because that was our working order, but that's, we're not voting on that.
Okay, and it should not be there.
No, that's, that was, that was the version we were working off of in all of our changes, but that is not, there's been no change. It puts public comment as the.
Point of order.
It puts public comment to the first thing, too, and that is not true. Yes?
I seconded. You're, you're tabling the motion.
We already voted.
It's already tabled. The discussion was just why, Counselor Forgé had a question on the bottom part of the agenda changes, but none of those were changed. That was a draft. Moving on.
Move that it be.
I have an answer to Counselor Forgé's question.
The motion was already.
So the reason that was struck through.
Point of order, we're done talking about this.
No, I meant about the Pledge of Allegiance.
No, that, that strike through ver, that's, that procedure was in a working piece, none of that has been voted in by A&amp;O. That was, that strike through version is the June version, we redid it all in September.
Great, let's do the next order.
Okay.
Because that changed all of the numbering, that was the recommendations, which did not happen. Counselor Goleb.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 210 affirms the following appointments by the mayor to the following. Board of Health, John Romano, term to expire June 30th, 2023, short term to replace Nancy Bershov. Committee for Review of Charter Sections 7, 7, and 7, 8, Danielle Letourneau and Ashley Simple Ray, term to expire upon project completion. Crossroads Cultural District Committee, Jackson Williams, term to expire upon project completion. Health Department Medical Director, Dr. Timothy Lepore, term duration not applicable. Majority revote, majority vote required.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. There were no objection, there was no changes to any of the appointments. Who seconded that? Oh, Counselor Lapinski. Any discussion? Counselor Lapinski.
Yeah, I am curious as to why the Chief of Staff to the mayor is being appointed to a committee. Is that, is that something that's?
Objection. Objection, this was discussed in subcommittee.
Yes, this is in A&amp;O.
Counselor Lapinski is a member of that subcommittee and chose not to go.
That's not correct.
Okay.
I object, he had an opportunity.
That's, that's not accurate, but the, the public is entitled to know the answer to my question. I'm asking on behalf of the public, not on behalf of myself. So if you don't want the public to know, then you can object, but I think the public ought to know whether or not this is a typical thing. I'm not even saying I'm opposed.
Clerk Scott.
The ma, it's.
The ma- it's under the purview-
I would object even further because counselors are supposed to bring this up to the Chair of A and O ahead of time.
So it's under the purview of the mayor to make recommendations as she sees fit? The recommendation was submitted by the mayor. Per the charter, if the council wishes not to vote to appoint someone, there is a provision in the charter that would allow a certain number of counselors, counselors, excuse me, to vote not to appoint that person. I believe it's 11 needs to negatively recommend that appointment. So this is an appointment recommended by the mayor. The council can reject if they would like to follow the process in the charter.
Sure. And I was not suggesting that we should reject it. I was simply asking if that was a usual thing for mayors to do. But it sounds like I'm not allowed to know the answer to that and neither is the public.
So my, the mayor is allowed to make any recommendations that she would like?
That's fine.
The specificity on this certain thing, while Counsel Ricketts is, is that the mayor herself was not allowed to serve in this capacity and asked her Chief of Staff to be on this ad hoc committee of A and O. So yes, that's, that's why that was done. As in the school committee, the mayor sits on the school committee. This A and O ad hoc committee, the Chair of A and O and the mayor are going to not be directly on this committee. So that's where that came from. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Just note that Counselor Ricketts was absent for that vote. Oh, Counselor Ricketts is present for that vote. Who is reading the? Did it go to any committee?
It did not.
It did not go to committee?
This did not.
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to read the last motion of the evening? Counsel Haley.
Order number FY 2020, or 22 dash 041. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council votes to release executive session minutes when complete. Recordings and all materials associated with the City Council Executive Session meeting held on Wednesday, August 31st, 2022. The City Council releases said information without further redaction. Majority vote required.
Okay. Does someone want to give us a history on this? Yeah. Clerk Scott?
So I requested that I be allowed to contact the city attorney because I've never been part of releasing of any executive session information. Through email conversation, it was suggested that the council vote to release the information, to have a formal vote and an action of whatever materials the council chose to release, whether it's minutes, backup material, recording, it's all listed in here. So if you choose not to release something, you can amend the order. And the reason that it says without further redaction is some of the information that was provided to the council was already redacted. So we don't have the complete version to release. So there is a small amount of information that's redacted. But the, the attorney suggested that a formal action of the council be taken to release the information for the executive session.
Was there also a recommendation, Clerk Scott, about contacting the attorneys that presented and the information?
So after the executive session, the attorneys that were in attendance at the executive session sent emails to either the mayor's office or to myself indicating that they had no objection to the release of information. What they did ask is that if it was going to be released, that we let them know. So we will send them an email tomorrow before any information is released out to the public. We do have two public records requests waiting in our next request system for some information. So we, we've already had requests and it, it all depends on what the council does tonight, whether it gets released or not.
So this motion's been made and seconded. That is the rationale behind it? Did you have a question, Counsel Lapinski? Go ahead.
Yeah. Typically, minutes would come before us and we would vote to approve them. Do we have to do that before they're released to the public?
May I?
Yes.
So in mass general, I'm sorry, not mass general law, open meeting law.
Sure.
It states that the minutes should be reviewed prior to release. So what I had thought about doing is asking a couple of counselors, not all of them, but my thought was the president, the vice president and Ginny, Counselor Disorder, because they were the officers, to review the minutes after they were put in draft form, to review them if they had questions on anything that should or should not be included. Then based on their recommendation, those minutes would be removed. But in all honesty, people aren't asking, they're not asking for the minutes. They're asking for the recording.
Yeah, sure. I just thought that was worth the clarification. I'm satisfied with that.
No, again, this is my first time with releasing, so.
Is there any other questions on this? I have a comment to make on this and I'll, it's, it's kind of twofold. I have no issue based on the information that Kathy was able, Clerk Scott was able to come up with by contacting the attorneys who both had no problem releasing it. I have a problem with setting a precedent, because I have never seen this done before, where a meeting that was in executive session was released to the public. Because normally it opens municipality or a situation up to liability and that's why you have an executive session. So my fear is that once you open, you know, once you open that door to releasing the executive sessions, then what's the need of an executive session? So that's my point, is this one seems very unique. I would, I don't know if Robert's Rules talks about this. This just seems like a contradiction of its own term. And, and I don't have a problem with this specific situation because it was done, but I don't know. Counsel Forgie.
It's been my experience and I know that Clerk Scott can probably attest to this, but generally speaking, there has to be minutes of every executive session. And there also has to be a timeframe when the information can be reviewed by the committee and released. Example, contract negotiations with a union. That's all done in executive session for obvious reasons. But once the contract is settled, a request can be made of the negotiating committee and the union to release the records. It's, it's always been that way. I think a lot of people think when you're in executive session, that's it, you can never speak of it, it can never be seen again or anything like that. That's really not true. It has to come a point, and it can be redacted to protect people, but there does need to be a point when a request for an executive session may not be filled right away, but when the issue is solved, the records can be released.
The issue being solved is probably the catalyst of that information being released. But-
I, I've, my personal opinion is the executive session is over, it's done with. It was a closed, you know, it was a one piece. We all, we, we went in, we came out, we did everything we needed to do. And then if the attorneys and parties are willing to release, I, I think the council should be happy to have it released.
Agreed. I wanted to make sure the discussion was there. Counsel Gilmore, President Gilmore.
Yeah. So I used to work with classified military intelligence for eight and a half years. And at some point, information becomes declassified because it's important for the public to know about it. And, you know, if the federal government can do that, I think we can do that too. I would also say that, you know, you and I didn't actually call this meeting and call executive session. The mayor did. And in the future, because I did have a counselor talk to me about this, I think that we should make more of an effort to make sure that all counselors can be present. Once this is released, I know that that counselor is going to be able to get the recording, but it would be nice if in the future counselors could get that on their own.
Yeah. I wasn't even here for the executive session, so.
Oh, I know. That's why I made sure to include you.
Thank you, Counsel Gilmore. Counsel Bullock?
Oh, sorry. My hand was still up. I was just gonna, I think Counselor Forgie said it fresh off of my two open meeting law trainings. My understanding is that once the issue is settled, the, all the documents can become public documents. And I, I think that we should do that.
After, yes. Counselor Elmer? No, there's a, your hand's been up all night on my screen, so I apologize. It's not on the computer. You just keep waving at me all night. Is there anyone I'm missing on that screen? Because you're all, your hands are up. Okay. Is there anyone on council floor? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. That motion passes. I think we are done with motions. Presentations of petitions and similar papers, we have none. Is there anything we haven't spoke of on any committee that wants to talk tonight? Counsel Ricketts, do you want to recap CREs, open meeting or?
I'll just do really quickly that for the first time doing it, I felt like it was a good idea. I liked that the public could come and talk and that counselors could talk back. So it was a real conversation and I really want to thank President Gilmore and Vice President Gwynn for coming and Counselor Forgie. That was a lot of wealth of information in one room. We didn't know how many people would show up and what they would ask. And so we weren't like prepared. There was no scripts and it was, it was good. Unlike public comment, we could actually talk back for every single person who had a comment or a question. So I, I may do it again. That was nice.
Thank you, Counsel Ricketts.
Thank you.
I enjoyed the format, but my vice presidential duties make me say this. Please attend your meetings for your committees. I was getting off the highway at quarter of six, got a call from Counsel Forgie who had talked to Counsel, Clerk Scott, who said, if you don't get on that meeting in the next 10 minutes, you know, that, that you can, they're not going to be able to have a meeting, they won't have a quorum. So I got home looking a little more disheveled than Counselor Gwynn likes to. I'm starting to talk in third person, you'll think I'm Bobby C. But anyways, we, we need to really get on those committees. If you're on a committee, they, you know, it was a situation where President Gilmore's already on that committee. And then she was the only one there with Counselor Ricketts, which I had to go on to make a quorum of three. And it was a public invitation. We had people waiting and there wasn't enough counselors to do business. That is a really bad scenario. So please, you know, get on those working committees. This was a very good idea. I enjoyed it. You know, I got to talk. Of course, you know I liked it. But so anyway, please, I don't want to slap your hands, but we, it is very frustrating. And I've had at AR, A and O, the last two meetings, I've had three of us. We are on the very cusp of being not able to do the town's business, city's business, because we are, don't have enough of our counselors there to get a quorum. And, and that's really bad. It happened in the past. Counsel Ricketts has been through it before, where we not had quorums. And it's just not good business. If you're on a committee, please serve. Anyone else on the committee report? Any unfinished business? Oh, yes, got hands all over. Counsel Ricketts?
I just want to dedicate a page in the minutes for Audrey Murphy, who worked in our assessor's office for many years, who passed away on September 1st. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lapinski?
Yeah. I want to, in light of recent events, I want to reintroduce a motion of no confidence in the police chief and/or the mayor. I move that it be resolved, the City Council finds full and appropriate reason to declare that Police Chief Robert Haig has lost the confidence of the citizens of Greenfield. And finds further reason to declare that Mayor Roxanne Wiedegartner, due to her public support of Chief Haig, has similarly lost the confidence of the citizens of Greenfield. The City Council therefore calls the mayor to rectify this crisis of confidence either by firing Chief Haig immediately or by resigning from office.
I believe you, you seconded that motion, Counsel Mayo. Is that correct?
That's correct. Your, your whole screen froze there for a moment.
Oh, okay.
So I didn't hear, I didn't hear the entire thing, but I did want to say my second.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
A point, a point of clarification. Have we voted on this before? Because if we have, we can't do it again.
We have not.
No, it wasn't seconded last time.
I don't believe it, it didn't get a second last time, so it didn't reach the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none?
I mean, do you want me to explain why I?
Oh, I mean, it's a resolution, is not what it is?
It's, it's, yes. A vote of no confidence is a resolution by definition.
Yeah. Resolutions usually are interpreted by the reading of the resolution, but is there anything you need to clarify?
Just that my intention behind this was, was and is to strike something of a middle ground between people who just simply want this mayor gone and sort of the, all the different positions. Because to my mind, the mayor has it well within her capacity to do something to fix the crisis of confidence in our police department. It wouldn't solve everything. But audit or no audit, if the police chief is Robbie Haig, we, the people, are not going to trust the police department. It really doesn't matter what the audit says because we all know what he's done and what his officers have done. So my hope in this is not to disparage anyone. It's not to get anyone fired for the sake of getting them fired. We don't need an audit to confirm this. I think this is just something we all know has to be done. The mayor's not doing it. So my goal is actually to encourage the mayor to do the right thing here.
Thank you. Any, any hands up?
Point of order.
Okay. Point of order, yes?
If we vote this down, that means it can't get reintroduced for how long?
Nine?
Nine months unless we suspend the rules in order to reintroduce it.
Nine months or it comes back in a substantial different form.
Or we can suspend the rules.
Or we can suspend the rules, correct.
Can I move to table it?
Motion's been made to table. Do I have a second? It's non, it's, it's non-debatable. Roll call vote to table.
Non-debatable means we can't say anything about it?
Not on the tabling. Table, the motions to table are non-debatable. So if we table it, we can't, we can't discuss the main motion. We only, we're on the tabling, the motion to table, which is-
If you want to discuss it, you vote no to table.
Non-debatable.
Roll call.
It's a roll call vote. If you, it, if we table it, it can come back. If we vote to not table it, it's on the floor and can be discussed when the main motion comes back.
Okay. Can I just ask a question? If it, I just feel like I, this is something I want to give consideration to and I would need to read it and sit with it and it's quarter to 11. So if we table it, it'll go, it'll go somewhere. It won't, it'll come back in a month.
Table just means we, it stays here and we can bring it back at any time you vote to put it back on the table.
Okay. Yes.
Counsel Gullum?
Yes.
Counsel Bottomley? Counsel Bullock?
Yes.
Count, Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapienski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes. Yes, to table, right?
Right.
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yeah.
Vice President Gwynn?
No.
The motion is tabled by majority.
Moving on to, we have some first readings. Yeah, for the record. Which?
We have first readings.
Old business. We have first readings. Okay.
I have something else.
Okay, yeah. No, that's all right. Counselor Healy?
It is as of 6:30 tonight. It's old now.
Yeah, so I just want to say I'm a little disappointed in the mayor and the planning board for rushing into rezoning all those parcels along the French King Highway without any input from the council. I think it's a major decision that affects the city, and they went and voted for in favor to zero.
I agree.
I, I think we should have had some input in this. It's a financial thing. If you talk to constituents in Greenfield, the big problem here is, everybody wants some form of retail, and, and we can't build any retail in that zone now, and, and there was no input from us. I agree, we want good-paying jobs, and there's plenty of land out there, and we have people that are interested in those lands, but I think it was a rushed decision without any clear thought, or, or any input from the public. So I'm disappointed, that's all I want to say.
Any comments to Counselor Healy? Yeah.
Yeah, I will, I will have to join Counselor Healy in saying how disappointed. When I was mayor, which was a long time ago, we really fought very hard to get that land put into commercial use, and we had so many people at the table, so many constituents, and it ended up, the decision that the planning board made at that time ended up being contested. It took us nine years to get a positive verdict for that piece of property to be commercial. We also involved a Native American community in that particular piece of property as well. They were at the table, the landowners, everybody. And at this point, I agree that we need commercial property that's identified. I believe there are other lands that could be identified as general industrial land without having to take that land. And there also was an agreement, in order for the library vote to go forward, there was an agreement by one of our counselors, and another, another, and the library, people that were in favor of the library going through, so that the land would remain commercial. That was the agreement, in exchange for the vote for the library to go through. I really feel strongly, I have very strong emotions about this piece of land. I'm shocked. I'm unhappy about it at this point, and I do not understand the mayor's decision at all on this.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes, I was at the planning board meeting. Counselor Disorder and I were there, and we, we made the case, Counselor Healy, that there was strong feeling that there should be some commercial in that space. The, they made the point that accessory uses are allowed for planned industrial, so that the industrial facilities could have cafeterias, cafeterias, or health clubs. And they also made the case that the other side of the street is still general commercial, so that if, if, if the economy supported it, there could be restaurants, or massage parlors, or whatever people wanted on the other side of the street. I was disappointed that they ignored us and went ahead and made it planned industrial, but it's just the start of a process. I think it's 90 days, there has to be a public hearing with the Economic Development Committee, so Counselor Forgé, you still have a chance to let your voice be heard, and the, and the city council is not required to do what the planning board says, it's up to us. So as I say, the process has started, I was disappointed that they didn't listen to us. I think they, they took the mayor's intention to market that, that area as planned industrial to invite industry in. She thought that would be useful, I heard that. I think it needs to be discussed, and, and the process has started. Thank you.
So point of clarification, Counselor Elmer.
Yeah.
It is not a done deal. This still has to follow the procedure where it goes to economic development, there should be a joint public hearing, there should be a public hearing. That is correct.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Because I could not figure out when this statement was made, how they got that far without us, because it can't happen. You know, so, thank you for that. I mean, you know, I thank you for the fact that, I, I thought I missed something. I'm like, I did not, I worked right alongside of counselors that are here and the past mayor on that piece, and I just, things change. I understand that, but I didn't know how they avoided doing what is required, so I appreciate that. Counselor Gilmore, President Gilmore. No, she's not. It's Counselor.
I don't have my hand up.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. It's the weirdest thing tonight. This screen shows no hands, that screen shows everybody with hands. Counselor, Counselor Bullock? Were you a hand that was not really a hand?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm a hand, sorry.
Okay.
Now your hand's gone.
The, I just wanted to also appreciate the, the EDC planning board meeting that we had. It was really informative. I was also kind of confused how things moved so quickly, so I appreciate this conversation. I also just want to remind the council that there is protected lands there, as Counselor Forgé was talking about. I believe there is a clearance that needs to be done. I've walked those lands with, with folks before, and so there is a protected area there. I believe it's something like 10 acres, and there is like a couple hundred feet clearance for development, and so I think it's really important that we have the guarantee of the city council and of the executive branch and the planning board, that the efforts to protect and preserve the human remains and the burial grounds that are, that are there and have been there for thousands of years, continue to be protected from buildings, roads, billboards, structures, all, all of those things moving forward, along with the development that may happen there.
Thank you, Counselor Bullock. Nothing new on this. Okay, Counselor Ricketts, and then Toranzo.
Okay, yeah, well, you know, for those of you who know me, yeah, this is my life for the, many, many years, so I am really upset about it. I'm going to be watching carefully, because I fear there's going to be some spot zoning going on, which is really illegal, and it should not be happening. Also, we're talking about, you know, some marijuana grow places, and a piece of this one that is coming up is in land that Selectman, way back when, set aside when this whole thing was turning commercial. So there's lots of things going on here that I do not understand how any of this can be actually happening right now. So Counselor Healy, thank you so much for bringing this up. The anger that I had reading the paper and it getting this far, I mean, there's weeks like this week when we've been in meetings every single night. To add another one for planning board, I don't feel like I'm going just to learn something. I feel like I need to go to be a watchdog, and this is a lot right now. So, thank you.
I just wanted to ask a question on my recollection of, of this area. When the, when the, the big deal, if you want to call it, was, was made, I, I, wasn't there a lot of talk about this being mixed-use zoning? Like, almost creating a commercial-industrial, I don't, this is what I'm trying to remember, it's kind of foggy for me, but I thought that there was a lot of talk about, like, there almost being a new zoning category, and it was specifically when they were talking about this land. I didn't, I don't recall where that went.
Yeah, I, I think, I think there's some, some merit to what you're saying, and I don't know where, where it was, but I, a mixed-use kind of, yeah.
Could I address that?
Yeah, of course. Counselor Elmer?
Yeah, the, the mayor, when she proposed this, said it was, she didn't, she didn't have a strong feeling it could be planned industrial, like the industrial park, or a new category, industrial, commercial. The, the planning board didn't, didn't take that offer, but that, that was what she suggested when she brought it before the planning board originally. This was something new, though. This doesn't go back to the, the big deal. This is something that she proposed when she first presented it to the planning board.
Thank you. I'm going to stop this line for this evening. We have, still have items on this agenda that we need to get rolling on. Because Counselor Elmer is going to bring us up to date on this and have public hearings, let's, let's move forward. But thank you for bringing that up, Counselor Healy. First readings. First one is your digester, Counselor Forgé.
Order number 23-029. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weidegartner, and in accordance with Mass General Laws, an order to repurpose $3,585,000 anaerobic digester authorization, move that it be ordered, that the city council, Greenfield City Council approves repurposing in the amount of $3,585,000 of a previously authorized anaerobic digester to a sludge dewatering project. Majority vote required.
It's just the first reading.
First reading.
Page 74, this one goes to, this is Ways and Means also. You just have to read the short version, Counselor Forgé, on that.
Yes, I can do that.
Paper.
Okay. Yeah, approve, oh, let's see, approve Baker's Office supply invoice payment of $113.80 from fiscal year 23 assessor's department budget.
Thank you.
$113.80?
I know.
We can't afford it.
Let me give you that. Notice of proposed zoning amendments. Do these? Counselor Elmer, page 80. This is you.
Okay.
Short version only.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Notice of zoning amendment proposal, September 21st, 2022. The following zoning amendment proposals have been submitted to the Greenfield City Council for consideration. Zoning amendment to rezone 41 Oak Hill Road, portion 75 Oak Hill Road, and parcel R20-10T from general industrial to rural residential, RST. amend zoning ordinance 207-17, marijuana establishments, marijuana indoor and outdoor cultivation.
Thank you. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. The meeting is adjourned at 10:56 PM. We finish before 11:00, Penny.